So Jackie, I'm gonna talk for a second here and see if this shows up on our stream.
Okay, sounds good.
And if we actually hear something.
It sounds like somebody else is gonna do the talking for you.
Yeah, somebody is very boisterous tonight. He's being naughty.
Hmm, I had that all day today.
Okay, I'm hearing that, that's good.
That is good.
Let me see if I got it over here.
My boys know now when I'm talking with Kevin that they can't interrupt me. So they talk through that whole phone call, so I have to get up and get them a treat. So, don't call them dumb, that's for sure, cuz every time I get on the phone with Kevin now, they start their little husky talking at me.
Okay, I'm testing again, test, test. I've got it on my computer and on my phone, wanna make sure I hear something. And I'm gonna mute again.
Hi Dana.
How's it going?
Pretty good.
Did you start back this week?
Um, so I started back last week cuz um K one, two came back and then three, four came back this week. I have kids in all of those grades, so. This is our second week.
What building, which building did you say you're at?
Um, I'm at Mingus Brook in the mornings and Riverside in the afternoons.
One of my girlfriends is a paraprof Riverside.
Okay.
What grade did you say your kids are?
Um Hunter's in seventh, um Harmony's in third and Lily's in first.
My Hunter's, I have a Hunter, he's in eighth.
Yeah.
And, but I have a niece who's in third grade. Her name is Lauren. What teacher does your child have?
The third grader?
Mm-hmm.
My third grader is at Lakeview, she's uh, she goes to Westlake and um. Hunter just came over for last year, was his first year, and they're all gonna switch over, like when they can't be with me.
Yeah, I get that. I have a teacher friend who did that, uh moved his kids over when they could no longer be with him, he works in Marshall.
Mm-hmm. Your Hunter plays basketball, right?
Yeah, he does. Um, I just, we just got the schedule today, so it'll be an interesting.
Yeah, you and I mixed up, she was thinking of your Hunter and my Hunter, and yours is the eighth grader and mine's the seventh. Um, but he was excited to get back to practice this week, I didn't know if your son was pretty excited to go back.
Yeah, he starts practice, he's got practice and. He's gotta be there in like twenty minutes.
Yeah. Hi Abby.
Hi there, how are you guys?
Good.
Are you eating from you or you want me to turn my camera off?
Go for it.
What are you having? I need ideas.
So my kids are doing a, have a little co-op, they do three days a week now that, while they're virtual, my grandkids, I should say. And every Thursday afternoon, uh their extracurricular activity is to make dinner for their parents. So today is meatloaf and cheesy biscuits.
Nice.
And they're learning to cook.
That's good. We don't have a co-op, I just sometimes scream at my kids, hey, go make dinner. It works.
Yeah, for sure. Don't you love it when they get old enough to do that?
Oh my gosh, I gotta tell you, they, they have for years been like so helpful, like watering flowers, making dinner, laundry. Like. It's kind of like a theme at our house is like, what are you doing to move the ball forward? Like, like mom's not the only one here, so if I even start that saying, they're like, I know, I know, mom, I'm gonna get on it.
My kids watch too many cooking shows, so my daughter will wanna do something like make eggs and put sprinkles in it or something weird.
Olivia has been watching a lot of extra like TikToks lately on food. So she's been trying, like she took one of those um tortillas and put a slit in it, and then she scrambled eggs and put bacon and avocado and then folded it up and put it in the panini press. Hmm, was, was actually really tasty.
Yeah.
So a little fun stuff like that.
Hey Kevin.
Hey, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Alright.
Was Craig able to come tonight, Jeff?
Yeah, it's.
Oh good, I couldn't ever, I can't remember what night he has school classes on.
Uh, I believe he was one that the Tuesday didn't work.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
So yeah, Thursday, Thursday worked for everybody. Except for Dawn's unforeseen.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Circumstance, but.
So Kevin, do we have to stream tonight? We do, right?
Yeah, because it's um, just like another four ninety, but, oh, because there's a corn, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're already streaming Abby, things are moving.
I see webmaster there, so.
Kevin, do you have the flag tonight?
I do have the flag, yes I do.
Thank you sir.
Yep, I'll uh go ahead and get it ready.
Okay, join with Google Meet, okay. I should be, I should be there momentarily.
Thank you sir. There he is, helping him get on. Apparently there's, there was two meets, uh there was one in our calendar for three thirty and then six thirty. Um, I don't know, I did the same thing and quickly realized the time difference, Craig was, Craig was in another meet. So, welcome everyone, uh six thirty-two, January twenty-first, uh twenty twenty-one. Uh, call this meeting to order, I'd like to start with pledge of allegiance. Kevin, if you would sir.
Yes, I will, let's see. First I need to share. Then pull up the flag, is it there?
Yes sir.
Awesome.
Alright, with me please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
Alright, thank you Kevin.
I'm, I'm in the process of helping Jay get on, oh, he should be here right now.
Thank you ma'am. Sarah, if you would, you can go ahead and roll call please.
Okay, Abby Green.
Here.
Sarah Jones here, Craig Corbola. Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger. Tim Wood.
Here.
And then Dawn Fortin. Absent.
Is absent tonight. Alright, one point oh four, I remind everybody of the norms of collaboration, please. Uh, one point oh five, the addenda. Um, I don't believe we have anything Kevin, do you have anything?
No, I do not have any additions.
Alright, thank you sir. Uh, two point oh one, comments from the public, do we have any?
There is nobody signed up for comments.
Thank you ma'am. Moving right on, three point oh one, board goals. Uh, like to welcome Jay Bennett back from the M A, M A S B, Jay, thank you sir for joining us again.
Absolutely. I think we've got not enough with you guys, so you know.
You gotta get familiar with us.
That's right, that's right.
You got a bunch.
I liked it so much, I came back again.
So as I kinda touched on uh, uh Monday night in the meeting and touched on uh verbal phone calls with you guys. Um, uh doing a lot of research on board goals, it's something that Penfield has never done, or in a while at least. Um, I think it's a, a very good stepping stone to, for all, seven, six for tonight. Uh, to get out what we would like to accomplish, what we would like to do, that way we all know where we're at and moving forward as, as one board. Uh, talking with Jay last week, he is uh again volunteered to come back and help us, uh appreciate that Jay. So, um, I've got some examples, Jay, do you want to, how do you wanna? How do you wanna go forward with this?
Well, um, let's, why don't we start with the evaluation training and we'll keep the goals for after we're done. Does that work?
Does anybody have an issue with moving the table this for the moment, moving on to three point oh two?
Sounds good to me.
Did you have a preference Jeff?
That's fine.
Okay.
Jay, Jay's our guest, we'll, we'll treat to him tonight.
I appreciate that, okay, I'm going to.
So for the public, three point oh two is superintendent evaluation training. This is a training that pretty much goes on all year, correct Jay? There's four or five?
Yeah, we offer, we offer this training monthly uh to, to those board members that have not had it before. Because you have such a large number of your board members that have not had the training before, uh we recommend that we do a whole board training. Uh, I know everyone got six of the seven of you tonight, Dawn has been through the training before and, and I'm sure Dawn will be able to jump right in with this without a problem. Uh, but this will be a good opportunity for all of us to be together as a board superintendent team, talk about evaluation, talk about the things that are going on in Penfield. And you know, we're gonna talk about the goals tonight as well, so this will be a good opportunity for us to all learn together, uh what this evaluation process should look like.
Thank you sir.
Absolutely. Alright, so we're talking about the revised fall twenty eighteen superintendent evaluation that was amended in fall of twenty nineteen. And we'll talk about why it was amended uh as we get there. This is only relevant if you're using the M A S B tool, which you are, so that's fine. Uh, when I think about evaluating the superintendent, I feel one of these lovely colored faces here, so we know that sometimes board members uncertain of how to train or evaluate a trained professional educator can be concerned about open and honest dialogue and are afraid of conflict as it relates to uh evaluation, uh you know, I have been involved a, as a board member and evaluated the superintendent much like all of you will uh or have been uh as well, uh but I am a trained educator, I've you know, been in uh K twelve education for my entire professional life. Uh, most board members do not have that, uh that background. And so the prospect of evaluating someone that is a trained professional educator such as your superintendent, um that can be daunting, but I promise you when we get done tonight, you'll be ready to go. Okay, so why is this relevant to you? Well, we're looking to reduce the confusion and tension amongst board members and with the superintendent as it relates to evaluation, if you have confusion and tension on other issues, that's another workshop, we're just talking evaluation tonight, okay? We wanna keep the focus on what is most important for the students in your district, we want you to be confident that you're executing your duties properly, living up to the trust your community's placed in you. And as always, we wanna limit the risk of lawsuit to the school district. So our, our learning targets for tonight, we'll talk about indicators of superintendent job performance, we'll talk about artifacts of evidence, we'll talk about a plan for a rational cycle and checkpoints. And we'll also talk about how we're going to collectively rate the performance of our superintendent. You got this, I am fully uh confident in all of you and your ability to uh grasp everything we're gonna talk about tonight and be ready to evaluate your superintendent once we're done. Alright, so we'll start here by talking about the legal requirements. Uh, this is the part of the presentation where I remind you that I am not a lawyer and I did not sleep at a Holiday Inn Express last night. And so if we get too into the weeds on any of the legal questions, then I will refer you back to our wonderful attorneys at M A S B, Brad Bonasik and Sharice Lee. And they'd be more than happy to answer any of your specific legal questions that I'm not quite comfortable with. They don't like, they don't like me to make, uh give legal opinions, I'm not sure why, but they just, they frown on that. Okay, so by law, you have to evaluate your superintendent on an annual basis, okay? Your teachers, your administrators have to be evaluated by the end of the school year, your superintendent has to be evaluated every year. So it doesn't matter if you do it in the spring, or if you do it in the fall, or if you're an ISD or a RISA, you might do it in the late spring, early summer. As long as you're doing it around the same time every year for your superintendent, you're within the law. You have to assign a rating of highly effective, effective, minimally effective, or ineffective. You have to take into account multiple measures of student growth at a weight of forty percent, that's the orange portion there. The remaining portion is primarily the instrument that we'll be talking about tonight, that's fifty percent, and then ten percent progress towards goals, which we'll also be talking about tonight. When we talk about student growth, it's the aggregate student growth of the entire district. So the same growth model that is being used to evaluate your teachers is the same growth model that is being used to evaluate your building principals and administrators, and that's the same growth model that you as a board will then use to evaluate your superintendent, okay? We don't have state test scores from last year, because there wasn't a state test from last year. You evaluated Kevin in the fall and you will evaluate him again this fall. And there is a possibility that we may not have state tests this year, we don't know yet if we're gonna do M step or not, it's still up in the air as to whether or not we're gonna do M step. Because M step, the state test is fifty percent of this forty percent, so half of this growth needs to be based on the state test. And we don't have any state tests from last year, and we may not have any state tests from this year. Our recommendation is that you evaluate Kevin based on the ta, the testing data that you have the most recent access to, which is going to be state testing. It's gonna be from three years ago, uh and that's just kind of the way it is right now, because they, unless they make some changes, which they haven't done yet. The other portion of that growth uh can include alternative assessments, student learning objectives, nationally normed or locally adopted assessments that are aligned to state standards, so Kevin, do you, are you using N W E A? Okay, so N W E A could be a, a portion of the student growth, uh your local assessments could be a portion of the student growth, so you can use some other measures. But the state portion of growth is just not anything that we have any access to except for the most recent, which is gonna be again, that data from three years ago. Somebody have a question? Yes Abby?
Um, so Kevin wasn't even here three years ago.
Yeah, so uh here's the thing. Even in a perfect world, even if we had test scores from last year and test scores from this year, because Kevin hasn't been with the district for that long. Even if we had test scores this year, they still wouldn't quote unquote be Kevin's scores, right? Because we know that it takes a superintendent probably three, four, five years before their measures that they put in place really start to take effect. And so, uh you know, that's just the way that they, that's the way the law is, and it's, it's unfortunate, but even if we hired, imagine it this way. If you hired a brand new superintendent in the fall and you evaluated them on the test scores from this year, they wouldn't be the new superintendent's scores, but you still would have to use them in his evaluation or her evaluation, and that's just the way the law's written, so. There has been talk about eliminating growth from the evaluation process completely, but so far it's only. the evaluation process completely, but so far it's only been talk. Uh, nothing has come out of the legislature. They were hoping to maybe get something done during lame duck, but lame duck, uh, was especially lame this year. So, uh, nothing was done on growth and we're still, uh, stuck with it. So as it stands right now, we've seen the most recent data we have available to us. Yeah, Craig?
Are they just talking about, uh, eliminating, eliminating it? Uh, that's what you should do, Jeff. Eliminating it for just this year and next year, or is, uh, they just talking about in general eliminating?
Yeah, there, there's been, there's been serious talk about eliminating it completely, just removing growth from the evaluation procedure completely. Because, uh, as we could have told them when they decided they wanted to use growth, um, it hasn't worked out the way they thought it was gonna work out. And I, I could have told them that, but you know, um, it is what it is, but they haven't been.
Isn't it, isn't N W E A one of those things that is, uh, I, I'm not as familiar with, uh, the, the testing aspect of the M step, but in terms of N W E A, isn't that some, some more statistically valid and would be much more helpful? Uh, and it fits what we need at, at the local level as well?
Uh, a lot of people do believe that, and one of the reasons is because the, of the way that it's assessed. Uh, you know, if you're using it the way that it's supposed to be used, you use it three times in the year. And then you can see that growth over the, oh, you know, between those three tests, right? As opposed to the state test, the M step that's taken once a year towards the end of the year with results that don't come back to us until late into the fall, when those kids that took the test have already moved on to the next grade. So your point is well taken, Craig, and you're absolutely right. And that is some of the talk that we're hearing. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, our late state superintendent Brian Winston was one that was really pushing this. Uh, and then he unfortunately passed away. And so we have a new state superintendent in place in Michael Rice. We have a new legislator, new legislators in place now. Uh, and so this may come up again, but as it stands right now, there haven't been any changes to it, so we have to go with what we currently have.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So when we talk about that growth, we're talking about growth between two points in time. So how this year's fifth graders did last year's fourth graders did last, the year before that is third graders. Or as we just talked about, how a student did in the fall and then in the winter and then in the spring. So we wanna make sure that we're looking over consistent points in time and the same cohort, the same group, we're not gonna compare this year's fifth graders to last year's fifth graders. That's not the kinda growth measure that we're looking for. Okay, so as we said, 50% of that student growth must be based on statewide assessments. The other things that we have to by law evaluate our superintendent on effectiveness at ensuring implementation and execution of an annual evaluation system in accordance with law. So what this means, as we talked about it just a few minutes ago, all of your teachers need to be evaluated by the end of the school year, okay? They, uh, the principals, I'm assuming are most likely the ones that are doing the evaluation, okay? And what tool are they using for evaluation, Kevin?
Dean. Uh, Charlotte Davidson.
Okay, Danielson. So all of your principals have to be trained in the Danielson tool in order to evaluate the teachers, just like all of you are getting trained in this tool to evaluate your superintendent, okay? Any of your teachers that are deemed to be ineffective or minimally effective have to be put on an improvement plan. If all of those things are happening, everyone's evaluated by the end of the year, all the principals are trained in the evaluation tool, everyone that needs a plan is put on a plan. If all that is happening consistently across the district in a timely manner, then you can find your superintendent to be effective or highly effective. If any of those things are not happening, then you may not be able to find your superintendent effective or highly effective. But that's what we're talking about when we talk about the annual evaluation system. Those pieces and parts are all happening. And if you have any questions as to, you know, whether these things are happening or not, then you just ask your superintendent, say, hey, you know, give us some, uh, some data here, show us that everyone's being evaluated, all the evaluations have been turned into the state on time, whatever. If you get audited and the auditor finds out that, uh, you know, as they go through the records, that you're not reporting some of your stuff back to the state in a timely manner, you'll definitely hear about it. And that's generally not the way that you wanna find out. Better you hear from your superintendent than you do from the auditor. Okay, progress towards goals set forth in the school districts, school improvement plans, or strategic plans, or goals that you as a board have set for the superintendent, which is what we'll talk about after we get through with the training tonight.
Can I ask a quick question about the evaluations?
Yep.
Is that just the teachers or it's both teachers and administrators that are covered under that rule?
Uh, teachers and administrators all need to be evaluated by the end of the school year. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely. Pupil attendance. So you have to evaluate your superintendent on pupil attendance. Now, this is not whether your attendance is good or bad. This is more on, do you have systems in place to address attendance and are they followed consistently? So, you know, do you have those policies and practices in place that, that address pupil attendance? And skipping and, uh, you know, unexcused absences, inexcused absences, and you know, all those kinds of things. And so if you have those policies and practices in place, then you can deem your superintendent to be effective or highly effective. Yeah, Craig?
So Jay, I mean, Jay, it seems to me that this is really a tough year for that. Uh, uh.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons that we need to focus on the policies and practices we have in place. So, you know, if, uh, if we were completely blindsided by our attendance numbers this year, because we weren't tracking it, because we didn't have those policies and practices in place to track these things, then that would be a ding on the superintendent when it came to evaluation. But you're, I'm sure, very aware of what your attendance is looking like and what your student enrollment is looking like, because Kevin has those po- you know, those policies and practices in place, that means that he's tracking attendance. He's keeping track of, you know, the kids that are on pace to graduate, the kids that aren't on pace to graduate. He's keeping track of how attendance is going in the online classes and, you know, what kids are, are skipping the online classes or at risk of not passing the online classes and could then not, you know, be at risk of. And so as long as all those policies and practices are in place, you're, you're in good shape as far as the evaluation goes. Now, attendance may not be where you want it to be, enrollment may not be where you want it to be, but that's a, that's a separate discussion. Um, it, this is just maybe, this is just focusing on the actual policies and practices we have related to pupil attendance.
Yeah.
Student parent and teacher feedback about the district, and this is, this is important. This is student, parent and teacher feedback about the district, not about superintendent job performance. The only people responsible for evaluating the superintendent are on this call, plus you're one board member that's not, right? It's only on the board to evaluate the superintendent. This instrument, this process is not meant as a 360 evaluation, okay? It rests with the board to hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. That was what you were elected to do, those three things, some other things as well, but by law, you have to do those three things. So, um, what we're talking about here, the types of feedback we're talking about here is, does Kevin have in place policies and systems for soliciting feedback from your parents, from your community, from your students, as it relates to the goals for the district? So when you did that strategic planning process, did you involve parents, community members, and students? I'm sure you did. That is one way of getting feedback from those groups, right? When you sit down to do school improvement goals, do you have parents, community members, students on your sit teams or whatever, how, whatever you call your school improvement teams, you know, sit teams, disit teams, or whatever they are? Um, you know, do you have good representation there? Uh, you know, I don't believe you have student representation on your Board of Education. Uh, but a lot of boards have started to look at including students as either, you know, full board members, not usually without the ability to vote, but they attend all the board meetings and they participate in all the discussions. Maybe we don't include them in student discipline hearings or contract negotiations, things of that nature, but for the most part, they're pretty much like a full member of the board, uh, without voting rights. Um, but there's lots of different ways we can incorporate student feedback into this process as well, and that's one of the ways that boards are starting to do that. Uh, other information considered pertinent by the Board of Education. Okay. If we deem our superintendent to be highly effective for three consecutive annual evaluations, then we can go to every other year evaluations. There's a caveat to that. And the caveat is, even in those quote unquote off years, we still recommend that you evaluate the superintendent. We do not recommend that you ever not evaluate the superintendent. So if Kevin is deemed highly effective three years in a row, you can go to every other year evaluations, but even in that off year, you still evaluate, but it's maybe just a less arduous process and less formal process than the one we're talking about tonight. But and then in those on years, then you just do the full evaluation, just like we're talking tonight. And that only stands as long as he remains highly effective. If he dips to effective, then the cycle has to start over again. If, uh, you hire a superintendent that has had two years of highly effective in the previous district and then comes on and has a third year of highly effective with you, that counts as well. So moving to a different district does not start the clock over again. It's only when they fall below highly effective that that clock starts over again. Minimally effective, if you find your superintendent to be minimally, minimally effective, you have to develop and require a improvement plan for the superintendent. And so I did facilitate the evaluation with the board not too long ago. After we got done with the process, we calculated the rating and the rating came out to be minimally effective. So that board needed to sit down with the superintendent and say, okay, these are the things that we need you to do in the next year to bring yourself up to effective. If you find your superintendent to be minimally effective for two years in a row, then out the door they go. By law, you gotta get rid of them. Okay, we need to make sure that we're complying with the old Meetings Act. We need to make sure that we're complying with the Freedom of Information Act. We need to make sure that we post on our website this bright yellow, uh, website here should be posted somewhere on your website. And this links back to the research base and everything related to our evaluation. So by law, you need to have that somewhere on your website, pointing back to the evaluation tool that you're using. Okay, any questions about the legal things that we just went over for evaluation?
What did you mean by, I know what Freedom of Information Act is, but how does that apply to this?
So the final evaluation is, uh, something that is foable. Uh, so if they decide to FOIA the final evaluation document, then they can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, absolutely. All right, so let's talk a little personal experience here. So I'm gonna tell you a little story about evaluation. So years ago, in a previous, uh, job life, uh, I was at a, uh, half day conference with my supervisor and some other, uh, colleagues of mine. And we were in a, uh, half day workshop on evaluation and employee morale and all those kinds of things. And the, uh, presenter comes out and pulls up their PowerPoint and at the top of the PowerPoint says, you know, things to never do in an evaluation. And number one, and things to never do in an evaluation was the dump truck. Well, what's the dump truck? Well, the dump truck is when you back that sucker up and then just dump everything on that employee that they've done wrong for the year, okay? So as I said, that was at the top of the list of things not to do, right? So fast forward several months later, it's time for my evaluation with my supervisor that was sitting right next to me at that meeting. And my supervisor proceeds to reach into the desk drawer, pull out a pad of paper. This is in, you know, like October, November, something like that. And says, uh, you know, April 27th. I'm like, yeah, April 27th. Well, I asked you to do this and you did it, but not in the way that I wanted you to do it. And I said, did you say anything to me about it on April 27th? No, you, you wrote it down in the pad of paper and stuck it in your desk. And then every time that particular task came up, I completed it. It's not that I wasn't doing it, I was doing the task, but not in the way that she wanted. And I just continued to do it, not in the way that she wanted, because she never communicated to me that she wanted it done differently. And hey, she's the boss. If she wants me to do it differently, she just needs to tell me to do it differently and I'll do it differently. Uh, but instead she wrote it down and she just kinda, you know, sprung it on me at my evaluation. So, you know, I got the dump truck. So that is, um, you know, in my estimation, uh, not professional. Uh, it's not fair. It doesn't give me any opportunity to, uh, you know, grow as an employee. Um, it's not good customer service, because, uh, the customers were not being satisfied in a way that my supervisor thought that they should be satisfied. Uh, so, I mean, there's lots of things going on here. So if we try to do this with our superintendent, um, bad things would happen, okay? If you are not happy with the superintendent or something that the superintendent is doing, you need to address it right then and there. Not write it down and hold on to it until you get to the year end evaluation. This is a year end evaluation. It's a year long process, okay? There's constant checkpoints throughout the way, so that by the time you get to November, December, Kevin pretty much knows how this is gonna come out. All of you as board members pretty much know how this is gonna come out. Because you've been talking about it throughout the year. You've been making adjustments. You've been making suggestions to Kevin. Kevin's been making adjustments. Kevin's been keeping you up to date. So there's no surprises when we get to that evaluation. Because we're talking about, you know, we're talking about kids here. We're talking about ste- uh, teachers and staff and everything else. And so we wanna make sure that we're doing right by them. And that means we need to let Kevin know how he's doing throughout the year, not just waiting until the end of the year. The evaluation, uh, should not be a, uh, a hammer, which we use to, uh, you know, bludgeon our superintendent with, okay? Uh, this is something that is a growth opportunity. Uh, and as we talk about that, we'll talk more about those opportunities of growth. All right, let's talk a little bit about what the research tells us, uh, effective superintendents do. So we've got lots of research here, two-year process, substantial involvement of the profession, over a thousand practicing educational leaders, all the big associations, extensive review of the research, multiple committees, vetting and public comment to come up with these standards and drivers. So one thing I wanna show you here. So here is the evaluation instrument itself, okay? You'll notice here in A1 policy involvement, you'll see there's a, a two and a nine here. And here in A2, there's a one, a nine, and a 10. So there's these little footnoted numbers here in each of these areas, okay? So those numbers go back to these standards right here. So when you saw that number one, that was talking about standard one. When you saw that number two, it was talking about standard two. So when you see those numbers, that's what they're referring to. They're coming back to these standards. So there's a theme that runs throughout these standards. Let's see if you can, uh, if you can pick it up. Okay, so this first one talks about mission, vision, and core values. We know that effective educational leaders develop, advocate, and act that shared mission, vision, and core values, high-quality education, academic success, and well-being of each student. I know that you went through that strategic planning process not too long ago. Uh, and one of the reasons I know that is because we did that with you. And it was one of my colleagues that did that plan with you. And I know that also because we're basing Kevin's goals off the strategic plan. So I know that you have a mission, vision, and set of core value statements. And if that plan that you went to all that effort and time and money to create sits and collects dust on that bookshelf there behind Craig, then, you know, what good is that plan? Okay, so we wanna make sure that once we go to all the time, effort, and money to create that mission, that vision, and those core values, that everything that we do as a board, everything that we do as a superintendent, everything that we do as a board superintendent team is in adherence to and to the furthering of this mission, vision, and core values that we have set, okay? Ethics and professional norms, we know that effective leaders act ethically and according to professional norms to promote each student's academic success and well-being. We know that equity and cultural responsiveness, that effective leaders strive for equity of educational opportunity, culturally responsive practices to promote each student's academic success and well-being. So you see where this theme is, right? This theme around academic success and well-being. Now, when we talk about students' academic success and well-being, we're not talking about every kid in Penfield being ready to go to college. We talk about every kid in Penfield graduating and be ready for whatever's next. For some of the kids, that will be college. For some of the kids, it'll be community college. For some of the kids, it might be the military. It might be a trade school. It might be right into the working profession. It might be, uh, you know, three years of hiking around the world, getting to know themselves before they go off into whatever, they're, you know, it, it's gonna be different for every kid, okay? But I think at the end of the day, what you want for your kids in Penfield is to come out of the Penfield system ready for whatever's next, okay? And that's gonna be something different for every kid. And that's what we're talking about when we talk about academic success and well-being, okay? School improvement, effective leaders act as agents of continuous improvement to promote each student's academic success and well-being. Curriculum instruction and assessment, effective leaders develop and support intellectually rigorous and coherent systems of curriculum instruction and assessment. Community of care and support for students, effective leaders cultivate an inclusive, caring, and supportive school community. Professional capacity, effective leaders develop professional capacity and practice as school personnel. Now, this is a tricky one. Uh, you know, yes, we want you to, uh, provide opportunities for your teachers and your ed- and, uh, your administrators. We want you to, uh, give them an opportunity for growth as a teacher or administrator. If you've got a teacher that wants to be a building principal, what are you doing to support them in that? If you've got a principal that wants to be a superintendent, what are you doing to support them in that? What are you as a board doing to support your superintendent in his growth, right? And it, this is a double edged sword, because on the one hand, you're creating, uh, and supporting these educators uh, in the ways that you should, and hopefully they're becoming better educators and better administrators because of it. But then you also run the risk of them getting to the point where they go off and become a principal or a superintendent in another district and you lose them. Personally, given the choice between, you know, having someone for five years as a rock star or 10 years as, uh, just kinda mediocre, I'll take five. I'll take five years as a rock star every time. A vast majority of my day to day right now, especially right now, is based around superintendent search. Okay, and so I'm working with districts to find their next great superintendent. I've got a district that I think about three years ago. It was announced that their superintendent is retiring. And when I find that out, I call the district up and I say, hey, I, I called the board president and I said, hey, I see your superintendent is retiring. Let us know if there's anything we can do for you. We've got a free workshop. We can do search, whatever you need. Well, I knew before I even called this board president, I knew exactly what I was going to hear. Because this district had not hired an outside employee to be their superintendent in like over almost 50 years. They had numerous superintendents over those 50 years, but every one of them was either a building principal or a central office administrator within their district. That was just the way they did things. They trained their teachers and principals and whatnot to become superintendents so that once their superintendent decided they were no longer going to, you know, serve, they were going to retire, whatever else, they had someone to replace. Not only that, but they could point to five or six superintendents in the general vicinity that had at one time been a teacher or administrator in their district. I mean, they were like a farmhouse for, you know, a farm team for, you know, for administrators. And, you know, that works great for them in that they're training their people at the risk of losing their people. But again, they've got some of the best because they've taken that extra effort in training them up. Okay, professional community for teachers and staff. We know that effective leaders foster that professional communities of teachers and other professional staff. This is especially important, given that you're going to get little to no support from the state for your teachers, little to no support from the federal government for your teachers. And if you don't support your teachers locally at your, at your district level, they're going to find somewhere else to go because there's plenty of opportunities out there right now. So if you're not treating your educators as professionals, if you're not creating that professional community at your district, then they're going to find somewhere else to go. Okay, Kevin, you gotta move around so those lights turn back.
I'm focusing.
Is it traditional or any more about supporting teachers? Excuse me, supporting teachers with funds for getting their master's degree?
How do I feel about that? Is that what you're asking?
No, is it traditional in the districts that you?
Is it traditional? I don't know that it's necessarily traditional, but I know that it is, it is being done and it is obviously helpful. You know, here's the thing about master's degrees. So the research tells us that master's degrees only increase a teacher's teaching or, you know, or only better, you know, make a teacher a better teacher if it's a master's degree in an area in which they teach. So if they're a science teacher and they get a master's degree in chemistry, then yes, that can make them a better science teacher. But if they're a science teacher and they get a master's degree in educational administration, that doesn't necessarily make them a better science teacher. And so that's kind of where the disconnect is because, you know, I love my alma mater, Western Michigan University, go Broncos. But for a long time, Western and a lot of other colleges were guilty of having master's programs for teachers that were basically just diploma mills so they could get their master's degree and then go back to the district and get more money because the district pays more if you've got your master's degree. And I know a lot of my colleagues that had a master's degree in educational administration, they were never going to be a building principal. They had no desire to be an administrator. But that was the easy way to get a master's degree in order to get more money and get, you know, better pay. And that's not the kind of thing we should be supporting. If they want to be a building principal, then yeah, we can support that. But if they're looking to be a better science teacher, then they need to take more classes in science. If they want to be a better math teacher, they need to take more classes in math, English, you know, that kind of thing. So I would support that if it's in an area in which is going to improve their professional capacity as a teacher.
So we've, we've talked, Kevin and Abby, I think you remember this, we talked about the fact that down the road, we're looking at having more difficulty with hiring science and math teachers. And it's a, was, was a topic for a couple, two, three meetings, I think we talked about it. And a great concern too as well because we had difficulty finding that teachers over the last few years. So.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Operations and management. Effective leaders manage school operations and resources again to promote student academic success and wellbeing. Okay, some additional research, some meta-analysis, which is research on the research, 27 studies since 1970, over 2,800 districts, 3.4 million students, rigorous quantitative methods to come up with. The following, we know that district level leadership has an impact on student achievement. We know that effective superintendents focus their efforts on creating goal oriented districts. We know that superintendent tenure has an impact on student achievement. Generally speaking, the longer a superintendent is in a district, the more likely there is to be some academic progress. We know that effective superintendents include all relevant stakeholders in establishing goals for their districts. We know that effective superintendents ensure that there's collaborative goal setting process and that it results in non-negotiable goals in at least two areas, student achievement and classroom instruction. And we know that those districts with higher levels of student achievement are those in which the local board and the superintendent come together and are aligned and supportive of those non-negotiables for achievement and instruction. We know that effective superintendents continually monitor district progress and make sure that those goals are the driving force behind a district's actions. We know that effective superintendents ensure that the necessary resources, including time, money, personnel and materials are allocated to accomplish district goals. We have 30 years of research on the best practices and behaviors of superintendents. And this instrument that we're talking about tonight is based on what we know effective superintendents do. Any questions about the research base for the evaluation instrument? Okay. So understanding the instrument itself. So. There are five performance categories in the evaluation instrument. We've got governance of board relations. We have community relations. We have staff relations. We have business and finance. We have instructional leadership. It is not a coincidence that relations is in three of the five of these categories. We know that effective and highly effective superintendents are those that have positive relationships with their board. They have positive relationships with their community. They have positive relationships with their staff. If they have positive, effective relationships, productive relationships with those three groups, they're three fifths of the way to be in an effective or highly effective superintendent. Okay? If they have a good handle on the business finance and a good handle on instructional leadership, then you've got yourselves a five-tool superintendent. So just like we talk about five-tool baseball players, right? Five-tool superintendents, if you get a five-tool superintendent, grab on and hold on because that's what we're looking for. Alright, so the rubrics that we're going to be talking about are a list of a set of criteria which define and describe the important components of the work being evaluated. It helps to demystify this process, I promise you. Alright, so let's take a look. So across the top there, that's your performance category. Okay, in this instance, it's governance and board relations. Each of those individual boxes are performance indicators. And they are written in a progressive performance level language. So I like to think about this as the and more. Okay? To get from ineffective to minimally effective, you have to do everything in the ineffective box and more. To get from minimally effective to effective, you have to do everything in the minimally effective box and more. To get from effective to highly effective, you have to do everything in the effective box and more. When we talk about this being a growth tool, this is what we're talking about. Because if you deem Kevin to be effective in one of these areas, he knows exactly what he needs to do to get to highly effective. He has to do everything that he's continually doing and then a little bit more to get him to highly effective. Conversely, if you find him minimally effective in some area in one of these boxes, he knows what he needs to do to get automatically effective into effective. And that's what we're talking about as using this as a growth tool. So that district I was talking about earlier with that superintendent that was minimally effective, the board sat down with him and went over the evaluation instrument and said, okay, look, these are the areas in which you need to do better. Here's the tool. Look at it, read it and figure out what you need to do to get from minimally effective to effective. And if you.
Can you make that a little larger?
Uh, I can when I bring up the tool itself. The PowerPoint's a little more difficult, but when we get into the instrument, I'll definitely make it bigger.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and then this is a performance level across the top. So ineffective, minimally effective, effective and highly effective. Okay, so. The first area of the tool. Is this area of governance and board relations. Okay, so let me make this a little bigger there so you can see. So we have six areas, A1 through A6. So just take a minute to look at this, A1 through A6 and see if there's anything in here, A1 through A6 that you'd like to dig just a little bit deeper into and just shout it out. Let me know what you're thinking.
Is it, is there a way to make it like full screen on our screen?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, there, that's better.
Okay. I'll scroll down just a little bit there so you can at least see. There you go. Yeah, see if. No, that's probably not any better, is it? Alright, we'll go back to that. Okay, A1 through A6 there, any of those jump out at you?
Information.
Information, A3. Okay. So ineffective does not provide the information the board needs to perform its responsibilities. Minimally effective keeps only some members of the board informed, making it difficult for the board to perform its responsibilities. Effective keeps all board members informed with appropriate information as needed so it may perform its responsibilities. I mean, effective to me, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty, a pretty easy thing to get there, right? Keeps all board members informed with appropriate information as needed so it may perform its responsibilities. Highly effective has established mutually agreed upon protocols with the board regarding communication, executes those protocols consistently. A lot of times, the difference between an effective and a highly effective superintendent, an effective superintendent tends to be reactive, a highly effective superintendent tends to be proactive. Okay? So a highly effective superintendent just kind of waits, or I'm sorry, an effective superintendent just kind of waits for things to happen and then addresses them. A highly effective superintendent does their best to anticipate things and put policies, procedures, systems in place to deal with them, knowing that they're coming. Okay, and so that's kind of that reactive versus proactive. So in this case, we're talking about keeping the all board members informed. You know, a superintendent that is effective is just, you know, keeping you all informed, making sure you know everything that's going on so that you can do what you need to do. That highly effective has talked to you about the policies and the procedures, your preferences for communication, all that kind of thing. And then puts together a plan and then carries out that plan consistently all the time. So I was working with the board, brand new superintendent to the district. So we were doing a follow-up workshop with the board and the superintendent. And I had these communication scenarios. And I said, okay, Mr. New Superintendent, here's the scenario. Your board member reaches out to you and says, hey, in our last board meeting, there was some information there about the new food service contract. I didn't understand XYZ. I said, what do you do? And the superintendent says, well, I answer their question. And I said, okay. And I looked at the rest of the board members and I said, does anyone have any input on that? And the vice president of the board raised her hand and said, well, actually, my preference would be that if one of us has a question, that you answer all of us so that we all get the answer because one of, you know, another one of us may have had that, you know, exact same question. And so that's an example of now the superintendent understanding that communication need for the board and understanding that just communicating that one board member is probably not going to be enough. That he's going to have to communicate to the entire board about that particular issue. So that is having those protocols in place. Okay? Anything else here, A1 through A6? Uh, you know, board questions, A5 here, it's kind of the same kind of thing here. Uh, you know, effective board questions are addressed with follow-up to all board members. Highly effective has a system in place for receiving and responding to board member questions in a timely and thorough manner. So again, it's having that system in place, making sure that everyone's getting all the information they need in a timely manner and consistently because there's a system and he always is following that system, things of that nature. Alright? Anything else, A1 through A6? Okay. Let's move on to our next performance indicator, which is community relations. So as you'll see right here off the top, if you notice in this first column here, sometimes you'll see some of these headings that are kind of this pinkish red. These are the ones that are explicitly laid out in the law. So remember, we talked about the fact that parent feedback was something that was explicitly laid out in the law. And remember, we talked about it not being feedback about his job performance, but feedback about the district. So if we look at the effective and highly effective here, a highly effective, I'm sorry, an effective superintendent readily accepts parental input, engages parents in district-wide goal setting and decision-making. Highly effective actively seeks parental input, creates methods for parents to be actively involved in decision-making as well as setting and supporting district-wide goals. So the way I like to think about this one is, an effective superintendent is answering the phone when it rings, is answering the text messages, messages that they might get, is answering the emails that are sent to them. Okay? That's effective. You know, when someone, you know, shouts out his name at the grocery store, he acknowledges them and talks to them, right? That's effective. A highly effective superintendent isn't waiting for the phone to ring. He's making the phone calls. He's not waiting for the emails to come in. He's sending the emails, right? He's not waiting to be, uh, you know, accosted in the grocery store. He's doing the accosting. Okay, but in a socially distant, appropriate way. But, you know, so that's kind of, again, that proactive versus reactive, right? So that highly effective superintendent is, you know, actively engaging. Instead of waiting for the things to come to him, he is out there actively engaging. So I know a superintendent that would, on a monthly basis, get together with the PTA and PTO presidents and vice presidents from all the schools in the district and had a monthly meeting with them. And so all the PTA, PTO presidents and vice presidents knew when this meeting was. So they made sure to get input from their PTA parents and bring that to the meeting with them. And so then when they sat down with the superintendent, the superintendent could inform them about whatever the superintendent wanted to inform them about what was happening in the district. The superintendent could ask them about, you know, how the district's doing, goals, all that kind of stuff. The parents that had an opportunity, the PTA presidents and vice presidents had an opportunity to engage with the superintendent and let the superintendent know all the things that were happening in their buildings and everything, all the issues they were dealing with. That is a highly effective superintendent. Isn't just waiting for the PTA president or vice president to call them up and complain, is actively seeking their input on a regular basis every month. That's what we're talking about, highly effective. Statistically, okay, in, in a, you know, in Jay's world, in Jay's world, we'd have a state full of effective superintendents. And I'd be happy with that. Okay? But the reality is statistically, we have some highly effective, we have some effective, we also have some minimally effective and we have some ineffective. So if we could just get everybody up to effective, I'd be happy with that. And I think that with this tool, it's a good step in that direction because all those ineffective and minimally effective superintendents can see exactly what they need to do to get themselves up into effective. And effective is where we know good things can happen. Highly effective is great, but that's just the cherry on top. Okay? Effective is at the bare minimum where we want to be. And if we're there, then we know we can move things academically and we can provide those opportunities for all of our students. Okay.
Can I just ask? Uh, this is a procedure question of, so let's say that the superintendent has any one of these boxes that they can give us evidence that they have done things that they believe put them in, that Kevin puts, has done activities that he believes puts him into himself into the highly effective box. And he has calendars or meeting and whatever his evidence that he gives us. But what happens if, um, the board has a different idea about how that should be carried out?
Yeah.
And I'm thinking especially right now, since we're not, I'm not thinking this in a bad way at all. Because I know everybody's like on board with this, but as we're transitioning like from a board where we, he might've had a different expectation than a new board.
Sure. So the, the best way to address this is make sure that when we're doing the planning process, which is kind of what we're doing now because we're training you, you're setting the goals for the superintendent and everything. So this is kind of part of that planning process for the evaluation cycle. Kevin should have a pretty clear idea of your expectations. And if he doesn't, then he needs to get clarification from you. And once he has that clarification, has a pretty good idea of how you're going to evaluate him, then he can make sure that he's collecting the appropriate evidence that you're looking for throughout the year so that it can address those things that we're talking about. If we get into these areas and, you know, Kevin has himself down as highly effective or a four and, you know, some of you have him as a four and some of you have him as a three, then what we're looking to do is come to consensus. Okay? And so that means I'm not asking the threes to come up to fours. I'm not asking the fours to go down to threes. I'm saying, can we come to consensus on this? Can we agree that maybe a three and a half is appropriate here? And if we can all come to consensus on a three and a half, then great, we put them down as a three and a half and we move on. If there's only one of us at four and everybody else seems to be at three, then maybe the consensus is. If there's only one of us at four and everybody else seems to be at three, then maybe the consensus is we're, you know, we, we come down to three, right? We could do halves, so we could do one, one and a half, two, two and a half, three, three and a half, four. We're not gonna do quarters, we're not gonna do eighths or thirds, right? So it's either going to be a whole point or a point and a half. And we're going to do our best to come to consensus. If we can't come to consensus, then we're just going to have to go to majority rules. So if four of us are at a four and three of us are at a three and we can't come to consensus on three and a half. Then it's going to be a four because four of us are at a four and that's majority, right? Same if four of us are at a four and three of us are at a one, right? There's probably something going on there, okay? My, uh, you know, my suspicion is that those three board members have, have an axe to grind on that particular area. And so they're just, you know, and they're not going to move off that one. And so we probably could talk to her blue in the face and never come to consensus on that. And if that's the case, then we have to go with majority and majority says four, so we're just going to go with the four. Our goal is to come to consensus, but in those areas in which we can't, then we're going to have to go with majority. Okay? So I know, uh, at least Craig was, and I think Linda was when I came and did. Uh, the last evaluation and did the facilitated value, was there anybody else here for that one, for the facilitated evaluation I did in the fall? I'm sorry, Dawn, uh, I'm sorry, Dawn and.
I missed that one.
Yeah, um, and so, you know, that was the process was, you know, that I walked the board through the evaluation process and we did all that and we came to consensus. Now I had a board one time, we got done with it, we came to consensus in all the areas, we did all the math. And at the end of it, um, a couple of board members voted not to approve it. And I'm like, you're voting against math. I mean, we, we went through, we came to consensus in all the areas and the tool is now telling us that this superintendent's effective. But they were hoping that the math was going to come out differently. And so when the math didn't come out the way that they wanted it to, they voted it down. And I was like, okay, I mean, it didn't matter, it still passed, but I just thought it was kind of funny that they voted against math. Um, okay. So I want to take a look at B6 here, approachability, only because this is one of those examples of something that as written in the tool, probably doesn't necessarily apply to the, the. The time that we're in right now. Um, so what kind of adjustments can we make to it so that it kind of fits a little bit better? So in effective here, it talks about is consistently visible at events and approachable by members of the community. Well, we don't have a lot of events going on right now and we can't be consistently visible at events that we don't have. And, um, you know, approachable by the community, I mean, no, six feet away with a mascot, please. So, you know, this is not really something that we can, you know, necessarily evaluate him on right now as it is written. But can we take a look at the things that are happening in the district and, you know, kind of tweak this a little bit to better fit? And so if I was looking at this one. And you know, when we talk about consistently visible at events and consistently visible at a variety of events and developing methods of being approachable. I'm going to think, okay, so how does that translate? Well, that translates to me, how is Kevin doing as it relates to communicating with the public regarding everything that's going on, right? Is Kevin out in front? Is Kevin making sure that he's communicating on a regular basis with the community through all the communication channels that we have? Facebook, social media, Twitter, email, newsletters, robocalls, you know, television appearances, radio spots, I mean, you know, whatever it is, right? Is he doing all the things that we as a board would expect him to do to make sure that the community is. Aware as to who our superintendent is and what we're doing with our district, right? Because that's one of the biggest complaints that I'm hearing from across the state is, well, the district's not telling us what they're doing or they're not telling us what they're basing their decisions on. And so that kind of thing, so that's, that to me is kind of the equivalent to being visible right now. Um, because the last thing you want right now is for your superintendent to go hide in the corner. Um, and just kind of let this thing figure itself out. That's not effective or highly effective, it's barely minimally effective or ineffective as far as that goes. Okay, anything else here, B1 through B6? Alright. Let's move on to area C. So area C here talks about staff relations. So this C1, this staff feedback reads just like the community feedback from the previous one, uh, or the parent feedback from the previous one, just swap out, uh, you know, teacher. You'll also notice this one has seven. And so I want to focus in here on C7. So again, this is another one of those, C7 talks about visibility in district. So we're going to, uh, we're going to fast forward here, we're going to go to a place where we're all back in school. Everything is as close to normal as we can expect it to be, but things are running and you know. The kids are back, the teachers are back, everything's going. And so now Kevin, uh, you know, needs to, in order to be effective, needs to consistently visit buildings and classrooms and special activities. And he needs to conduct regular and purposeful visits to buildings and classrooms and consistently attend special activities. If he wants to be found highly effective or in a, or effective in this area, okay? Now, when it comes to consistently visiting buildings and classrooms, well, you know, short of following Kevin around all day, which I'm sure none of you have the time to do. And I wouldn't recommend it even if you did. Um, you know, you don't really necessarily know, you know, where he is or what he's doing. So I talked to a veteran superintendent about this one time and I said, so you know, how do you keep your board informed as to your comings and goings? And they said, I, you know, print off my weekly calendar and I share it with the board president. And the board president can see every meeting that I've got and every billing business that I've got scheduled, all that kind of information. And if it doesn't, if it's not on my calendar, it doesn't happen because I live and die by my calendar. And so that is a way that the board president can then share with the rest of the board, okay? This is what Kevin's doing on a regular basis, this is how often he's visiting the elementary schools, this is how often he visits the middle school, this is how often he visits the high school, that kind of thing. I said, okay, I said, now tell me more about this regular and purposeful visit, what does that look like? And the superintendent said, well, you know, I pull into the parking lot, I get out of my car and I, I look around, you know, what's the parking lot look like, right? Is there, you know, are there cracks, are there potholes, are there weeds growing up in between the cracks, does it, the curbs need to be painted? As I walk up to the building, does the lawn need to be mowed, how's the flower beds looking, is there a piece of fascia hanging off the front entrance, you know, that kind of thing? When I come into the building, did they buzz me in, did they, you know, recognize me, uh, you know, were the doors locked like they're supposed to be? Uh, when I get into the building, are, am I seeing the things hanging in the hallways that I would expect to see hanging in the hallways? How are the kids performing in the hallways? How are the teachers interacting with the kids in the hallways? Are they yelling and screaming at them or are they, you know, mis redirecting and doing all the things that we'd expect our teachers to do? Uh, I pop into the office, I talk to the secretaries, because you know, the secretaries always know what's going on. I sit down with the building principal for a few minutes, talk to the building principal. And then, hey, you know, we put that new reading program in place and I know Mrs. Smith is teaching that new reading program, so I go down to Mrs. Smith's, Mrs. Smith's class. And I see that reading program for a few minutes. And then, you know, I got a report that there was, uh, you know, that there was a leak in the roof in the, you know, back corner of the building, so I go back to the back corner of the building, check that out. That's a regular and purposeful visit, right? And so all Kevin needs to do is just talk to you about, these are the things that I do when I walk into a building, this is how often I go to those buildings. And that is the information that you need in order to evaluate him in this particular area, okay?
Wait, did you refer to, I mean, uh, does that include him going to, uh, extracurricular activities? Uh, as well, slow band, band concerts, uh, basketball, soccer and so forth?
Yep, that would be the consistently attends special activity, so that's, that would fall under this as well. Uh, and you know, and my, my only caution to the board here is that, um, you know. When things, again, get back to how they used to be, or at least as close to how they used to be as, as, you know, as possible. Uh, and those events start coming along again, I mean, it's easy, really easy. For him to be in 15 events every night of the week, right? And so, um, you know, at the risk of, uh, burning our superintendent out. Uh, we need to, you know, have a, a reasonable expectation of, of what it is that we, you know, of what, of what it is we should expect. And we have to communicate that to him so that he understands. And so that district I was talking about earlier, uh, that deemed their superintendent ineffective, that was one of the sore spots with the, uh, school board. Was that they did not think that superintendent was out in the community and out at those kinds of events on enough of a regular basis. Uh, and they had given the superintendent very clear direction as to what their expectations were. We don't expect you to get to every chamber commerce meeting, but we expect you to get to at least one a month. And he wasn't doing that. We don't expect you to get to every sporting event, but you know, one or two a week would be acceptable. And he wasn't doing that either. And so, you know, the board was trying to be as clear with him as possible as to their expectations and he just wasn't following through. So they had no choice but to deem him minimally effective or ineffective in those areas. So that's all you need to do is just have that conversation with Kevin, be reasonable in your expectations. Uh, and make sure that, uh, you know, he's able to attend those events and, you know, still have a, a life away from school. Uh, and that you're not burning them out. Um, because, uh, you know, if you are happy with your superintendent, you want to do everything you can to. And you've only got that one employee that, that you're responsible for keeping happy, so do what you can to, to make that happen.
So the past J, um, I think, uh, whatever superintendents, uh, made it to basketball and football games. Uh, but I don't think I ever saw them at, uh, women's tennis. Or at women's, uh, baseball. And, uh, no reflection on you, Kevin, it's just that, that is one of those things that is an equity issue. And the fact that our superintendent wasn't going to, uh, women's as well as the lesser sports, shall we say. Uh, events, that, that to me was a, a significant type of thing.
Oh, absolutely, and, and you know, and that's the thing, I mean, you know, I, I don't think anybody can expect, um. You know, the superintendent to be at every event and, you know, and not, and especially not every event for the entire time of the event. And so sometimes, you know, it may be that, you know, because some of those sports might play right after school. So he might be able to swing by the tennis event, watch a couple sets and then he's got to, got to go somewhere else because he got, you know, another place. So, you know, that art of, uh, of being everywhere and nowhere all at the same time, right? Uh, and it's, it's a, you know, it's a trick, uh, but it's, it's something that, uh, a, a highly effective and effective superintendent finds a way to do. So absolutely. Okay. Let's go down to D here, we don't need to spend a lot of time in D, I mean, D is business of finances, pretty straightforward, there's only five areas here. Uh, budget development management, budget reports, financial controls, facility management, resource allocation, you know, all the things that you would expect here. Uh, you know, the big thing here is, um, and this relates to the entire evaluation. Think, let's, when, when we get to our goals later, okay? If we set a goal for the superintendent. And the superintendent doesn't meet that goal. Or if we have an area here in which we'd ask the superintendent to work on and they don't meet our expectations in that area. That does not necessarily mean that we have to by default find them ineffective or minimally effective. And what I mean by that is, is if we set a goal and the superintendent doesn't make it and we talk about, okay, so what happened here? Why did you not make that goal? And there's a perfectly reasonable explanation for why that goal is not met. As a board, you can make an executive decision to just accept that explanation and say, okay. So the pandemic is a perfect example. You may have had a goal that you set for the superintendent that the pandemic just basically made unattainable. Like there is no way that goal is going to be accomplished because, you know, that goal may have been, uh, will be more present in, uh, you know, classroom buildings. Well, we can't, how can we evaluate our superintendent of being present in classroom buildings when none of us have been in classroom buildings, right? And so in that case, yes, you had a goal, no, he didn't meet the goal, but it was the pandemic, we understand that. So we can move past that and we can still rate him as effective or highly effective, even though he didn't make that goal. Because we understand why, right? And so then we can, yeah.
I do have a question about that. So if the superintendent or the board sees a goal that is potentially not going to get met for some reason. Um, that, that feels like something we should talk about.
Absolutely.
The one that you just, um, mentioned, for instance. Uh, if I, if that came to me at a board meeting, what I might suggest is that we switch it out for, um, attends classroom Zoom meetings twice a week or something.
Absolutely, yeah, you're absolutely right, Abby, yes, we could, we can modify the goal, we can make the adjustment to the goal. Uh, if that is something that, you know, we as a board decide to do. Uh, but my, my bigger point to that was is that, you know, we, you have flexibility within this instrument to make some decisions yourself, right? You don't have to necessarily hew to the, you know, word by word. Uh, and you know, and you can make some adjustments along the way, as long as the entire board, you know, at least a majority of the board is on board. Uh, you know, with that decision, then yeah, you can make some adjustments along the way, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Then this last area, this is the big, this is the big kahuna here, uh, instructional leadership. So this has the most areas, uh, most performance indicators. We start off, E1 is that performance evaluation system that we talked about. You'll notice in all of these areas, in the top right corner, it talks about a weight. This is have, the most heavily weighted at 30%. Now, one of my recommendations when it comes time for the evaluation, if you are doing it yourselves, is you're looking at the PDF version. There's an Excel version, so make sure you use the Excel version, you enter all the numbers in the Excel version, it'll do all the math for you, it'll figure out all the weights for you. So you don't have to worry about trying to figure out the math. So I highly recommend someone have that Excel version open as you go through these things and note the numbers. Okay, so E1 talks about the performance evaluation system. If we scroll down here, E7, this is talking about that student feedback and again, this is going to read just like those other feedback ones, but it's going to be around student feedback. E8, we talked about student attendance. E9, support for students, I want to talk about E10 here, E10 is professional knowledge. So effective. Demonstrates knowledge of current instructional programs, is able to discuss them, seeks to learn and improve upon personal and professional abilities. Holds and maintains appropriate superintendent certification. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that your superintendent is properly certified?
The superintendent?
Well, kinda. But who else?
I'm going to guess mine.
I'm going to guess the board as well, yes. So it is a board responsibility to make sure your superintendent is holding the appropriate and valid certification. Because if it is found out that a board is employing someone that has either the improper certification or an expired certification. Then you could be liable for a fine equal to one year's salary of your superintendent. So unless you're looking at a, uh, hundred thousand dollar plus fine, make sure that your superintendent is properly certified. Yes, he does hold some culpability in this, we want Kevin to make sure that he's maintaining his certification. But ultimately, it's up to you as a board to make sure that you're checking on that. And the reason I say that is because just this past year, I had a board call me up and say, so I think that our superintendent's certification isn't. Um, right, we, we think it's expired, um, wh- wh- how can we check that? Well, you can actually look it up, uh, there's a state site that you can look it up. Uh, and when they did that, they found out that in fact, their superintendent was working under an expired certification, uh, he thought he'd been grandfathered in. So they addressed that and then they asked the superintendent to check it out. And they found out that, um, their entire central office was working with expired certifications because they all thought that they'd been grandfathered in. And so it is the superintendent's responsibility to make sure that everybody else in the district is carrying proper certification and not expired ones. And it is up to you as a board to make sure that your superintendent is carrying a proper certification and not an expired one. Okay, uh, this highly effective area, demonstrating that knowledge and comfort explaining current instructional programs. Participates actively in professional groups, organizations for the benefit of the district of personal professional growth. And holds and maintains that appropriate superintendent certification. So all I want to remind you of here, and I'm sure there's probably something in Kevin's contract, uh, that states that, you know, you will, uh, pay for his association fee to the Michigan Association of. Is it school administrators or superintendents in a minute, I can forget, it's school administrators now, right? Okay, they keep changing the name, I can never, anyway, MASA, we'll go with MASA because I know that hasn't changed. Uh, so you maintain his, uh, you know, his association fees and dues and then, you know, allow him to attend these professional events as, you know, as necessary and as needed when he can. I mean, kind of hard, you know, maybe, did you do any of the MASA this week, the mid winter?
I actually, uh, did an ad talk this morning.
Oh, fantastic, yeah, there was some good stuff. I had a presentation, yep, I did a presentation yesterday, so yeah, it was good stuff. So again, just like you are doing your professional training and you attend the conferences occasionally that we have. We expect you to support your superintendent the same, okay? So those are the five areas. Any questions about the five areas of the evaluation? Okay, so as I said, if you're going along and filling out the numbers in the Excel version, then this is the part F here, this is where. All the numbers would self-populate in here and then spit out a score. And you'll notice these kind of funky hashtag DIV slash zero exclamation point. If you know anything about Excel, these are the error codes that Excel gives when there's no numbers in there to do math with. And so when you print out a PDF like this, it prints those error codes. So that's what those mean. But if this was the Excel version and you'd fill these, the, fill these numbers out along the way, then it would have the proper, uh, scores in here for you. Then you get down to part. Uh, what is it, part G? And here is where you put in the student growth. And again, you'd put the number in here and then here is your progress towards goals, you put the number in there. Then all the numbers again would fill and it spit out a score here. And if you were highly effective, the score would be 90 to 100%, 75 to 89% effective, 60 to 74 minimally effective, and then less than 60% ineffective. Appendix A is the research base for the tool. Appendix B is a process, we'll talk about that. Appendix C is the actual conducting of the formal evaluation and conference, we'll go over that. Considerations related to the Closed Meetings Act, that's appendix D. Considerations related to the Closed Meetings Act, that's appendix D. Some timelines, we'll talk about that. Okay. Appendix F, establish performance goals. We'll talk about goals at the end here. Okay, appendix G, evidence. So in here, appendix H. It lists on these two pages, 107 possible artifacts of evidence that you could request of your superintendent. Now, I don't expect you to request 107 pieces of evidence from your superintendent. I don't expect your superintendent to provide you with 107 pieces of evidence. I don't want the superintendent to show up to your meeting with a three ring binder like this and plop it down in front of you and say, here's my evidence for the year. I don't want him to show up with a flash drive and say, here's my evidence for the year. When we go through this planning process, I want you and the superintendent to come together and say, okay, these are the things that we want you to bring for evidence. And I want to make sure that those pieces of evidence that you're asking of Kevin are those things in which you as a board are having a tough time figuring out whether or not those things are being accomplished. So if we go back to that visibility and district thing. If you need the calendar and you need a checklist of the things that he does when he visits a building, then ask for it. When we talk about people attendance, if you need some examples of the policies and practices that you have in place related to student attendance, then ask them for it. If there's a budget item that you want him to increase throughout the year, then ask for regular reports on that particular budget line, whatever it is. Just make sure that you're clear with them at the beginning of the cycle so that he knows he needs to collect this so that when you get to the end of the cycle, he can present that information to you. But again, I don't want his main focus for the evaluation year uh, for the year of the evaluation to be on collecting evidence because, um, he has a district to run. So that's what his main focus is, is running the district. Collecting evidence for evaluation is a part of that, but should be a relatively small part of that. All right. So let's bring the PowerPoint back up here. So we went over the five areas. We talked about the importance of evidence. The evidence is also, you'll see there's, uh, at the bottom of each of the areas, there's some additional areas of evidence that you could use. Uh, I had a board that thought these were checkboxes and that they had to check off each of these things at the end of the, no, you don't have to, don't do that. Just some examples of some evidence that relate to each of these areas. Uh, we encourage use of evidence to illustrate performance. It helps reduce bias and subjectivity. Uh, items that are generated by the superintendent provide evidence of meeting those goals. And, you know, we talked tonight about making sure that we had those clear measurables for those goals. Uh, working with the superintendent to reach consensus and then multiple sources, sources should be used. If you can count it, you'll be looking for proof, data, dollars, students, time, record that things have changed. If you can see it, you'll be looking for visible signs. Plans, paperwork, schedules, records indicating things have occurred or are going to occur. Utilizing evidence, there is evidence available for each of the five areas. But again, let's just make sure that we're being reasonable in our expectations for that. Okay, any questions about the instrument or evidence?
Kevin, I just wondered if you could share how you plan to deliver that evidence? How you've done that in the past?
Yeah, before it was a, um, it was an opportunity to send it electronically. And since it's every, which I'm sure Jay is getting ready to go over, since it goes from January to March to June down to September or October, September. That each one of those says, here's where you can find it evidence because it compiled as we're trying to keep up with it. Um, so it's mostly in the board docs in that actual envelope, in that actual folder.
So there's a In the shared Google Drive?
That shared Google Drive under superintendent, um, the superintendent, uh, shared drive. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So Jay, with, uh, I didn't have a chance to look through those 100 and plus artifacts. Uh, but have you, have you, um, uh, noted any specific types of? Activities in the buildings that, or is there anything in the literature that shows specific activities in the buildings that are more effective or less effective? So for instance, uh, attendance at uh, faculty meetings or, uh, observation in the classroom or, um, uh, specific meetings with faculty. Is there anything that you've seen that is that can kind of guide us?
Yeah, so, so all those things that you mentioned are something that Kevin should be doing. Uh, you know, he shouldn't, he doesn't need to be at every high school staff meeting. He doesn't need to be at every, but he should be making appearances at some of them to get feedback from the teachers, to give information to the teachers and, you know, and things of that nature. Um, and again, you know, because, I mean, you know, they have things that they're trying to accomplish during their meetings. Hopefully they're not having meetings just for the sake of having meetings. And so every time Kevin shows up, it throws their agenda off. So, you know, Kevin lets them know ahead of time that, hey, I'm going to pop in today. And, uh, I've got a couple of things I want to cover and then a couple of things I want to get some input on. And then they adjust their agenda accordingly. Um, but he doesn't need to be at every meeting. But he needs to just kind of give you an idea as to, hey, you know, guys, uh, and and girls, um, you know, I usually attend, you know, every other uh, month at the high school and every other month at the elementary, you know, whatever it is. And let you know that that's how he's making his presence known and that's how he's getting feedback. That's how he's presenting information, things of that nature. Okay, all right. So let's talk about aspects of the evaluation cycle. So as we've been talking about, this is a developmental process, right? We want to help further develop knowledge and skills. We want to clarify performance expectations. We want to provide those mechanisms for feedback. We want to link the superintendent's work to the district goals. So during that planning portion, we want to mutually agree upon our evaluation timeline and key dates. Our performance goals, which we'll be talking about at the end here. Appropriate benchmarks to checkpoints, artifacts to be used as evidence, process for compiling the year end evaluation. And then process individuals responsible for conducting the evaluation conference with the superintendent. We start by defining our performance expectations. So this helps clarify the board's expectations. This helps establish priorities for the work for Kevin. This helps provide a clear statement of board support for the work that's being done and this provides an accountability framework. So the district goals are the base of which the key work and goals of the Board of Education and the superintendent performance standards and goals and the school improvement plans and the district staff performance and the standards and goals should all be based off of this base of district goals. And this is all in that moving us forward. So first, we need to make sure that the superintendent and the board has clarity on the following. You understand performance as described in the instrument that we talked about tonight. You understand the district wide improvement goals or those goals that we'll be talking about at the end of the meeting tonight. And you understand how progress is going to be measured. You understand student growth and how that is being measured. And the hint of that one is that however you're measuring it for student growth for teachers is how you're going to use it for yourself as a evaluation growth measure for your superintendent.
Okay, so Jay?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, on that last slide. The district wide improvement goals.
Yes.
Those are superintendent goal or
Uh, it could be, yeah, yep, they could, it, it, for you, it's going to be those goals that we're going to talk about at the end of the meeting.
That's what I'm asking. Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Just for clarity. Yep.
Yep, no problem. So, uh, if we have any uh, clarifying expectations, we have anything we need clarified, then we can just identify that performance area where we need some clarity. Ask the superintendent, allow them to, you know, put together response and then once agreed upon, develop those smart goal statements. So we pretty much already did that on Monday, right? We talked about those areas. We got some clarity on those areas. Kevin has since then developed, uh, and turned those into smart goals. And then we'll talk about those smart goal statements at the end of our meeting tonight. Okay, so we can just kind of move past that. Okay. And we'll talk about how we're going to measure for progress. We'll talk about where we're starting on this. We'll talk about the data that's available. We'll talk about the expected changes that we should be looking for. And then we'll talk about those logical checkpoints as well. Okay, we want to make sure we're providing feedback. All right, self evaluation. Okay. So the actual evaluation process, we start by the superintendent doing a self evaluation. All right, so they will evaluate themselves using the tool. They'll go through, they'll compile any kind of data or evidence that the board has asked for. And then they're going to share that information with the board prior to that year end evaluation. We want you as a board to be open to the information being shared. We want you to provide the information to the superintendent that regarding that's appropriate for an evaluation. We want you to read through the evaluation, all the comments, the evidence provided, and then get any clarity that you need to get. You only have one employee that you're responsible for evaluating. So it's not too much to ask that you read through every, all the materials and make sure that you're prepared. Uh, you know, imagine the number of people that your, uh, building principals have to evaluate and your superintendent has evaluate. You only got the one, so, okay. Prior to the meeting, the superintendent is going to prepare that self eval, going to compile the evidence, going to give that to the board. The board is going to seek any clarity that they need and then you will have your own blank instrument that you will then start the process with. You will present, the superintendent will present the self evaluation and the evidence. And we want the superintendent to remain present throughout the meeting. Now, as far as I know, this hasn't been the case in Penfield, but there are some districts out there that have, as a matter of course, dismissed the superintendent from the evaluation meeting so they could talk about the superintendent behind their back. Um, there's a couple of different problems here. Uh, one, if you go into closed session, you can only go into closed session if the superintendent requests it. So you can only go into closed session for evaluation if Kevin says, I want to go into closed session, okay? If the only person that can call for the closed session has just been dismissed from the closed session, can you still be in closed session? Okay, not a lawyer, um, but I don't want you to put yourselves in a position where you could be violating the Open Meetings Act by dismissing the only person that can call the closed session from the closed session. So don't do it. The other reason is you can't fix what you don't know is broken, right? So if you have an issue with Kevin, you need to address it with Kevin, not with him outside of the room. So have those difficult conversations, have those crucial conversations to borrow from the business parlance. Um, you know, have them with him in the room, you know, just get it done, okay? That's why they pay you as board members the big bucks. Okay. Board president will review with the Board of Education, the self evaluation and the evidence provided. And then you'll score each of those areas. We want you to use consensus model, which we talked about earlier. Uh, we want you to discuss each performance indicator, settle on that score that you're going to live with. And we covered that earlier. Once you get done with all the performance indicators, then you'll move on towards the district wide goals. Then you move on towards the, uh, come to consensus for that score. Then you'll talk about student growth, come to consensus on that score. Then you'll think about any kind of themes or trends that you notice, right? So as you're going through this evaluation instrument. When I came in last time to do the facilitated evaluation, as we were going through that, I kept notes of the things that I was hearing from the board members and things that I was noticing on the evaluation. I then presented those notes back to the board and the superintendent. And if I noted any themes, then I made note of those. So, and I, off the top of my head, don't remember specifically. But, uh, you know, if I noted that it seems like every time we talk about communication, Kevin seems to score lower. And again, I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just making it up. Uh, then we know that communication is an area that we want Kevin to work on, right? If as we're going through this, we noticed that in four of the five areas, Kevin's scoring effectives and highly effective. But in this fifth area, he's consistently scoring minimally effective and effective. Well, I guess this fifth area probably should be an area of focus for us for next year. Okay? So that's what we're talking about when we talk about themes or trends. Uh, the board president then calls for a vote to complete the year end evaluation. Superintendent will note any comments and then the board president superintendent will sign the completed evaluation form. We cannot ensure reliability of this instrument if you average scores. So when we go back to that example I gave earlier about consensus, if four of you are at a four and three of you are at a one and you can't come to consensus, some boards may say, well, then we'll just average. We'll just take the four and four times four is 16 and three times one is three and add it 19 and divide. No, we're not going down that road. If you do that, then you render the tool invalid. What happens if you use an invalid tool to evaluate the superintendent? I don't know, and I don't want you to be the precedent for that either. Okay? Worst case scenario, superintendent decides that, hey, you used averaging, this isn't a valid, uh, evaluation. And, uh, I don't accept it. And then you get into a mess. So just let's not do that. Let's stick to using the tool the way it was intended to be used, the way it was validated, and that means consensus. In addition to that, we know that averaging the scores does not reflect the view of the majority of the Board of Education. Everything that we do as a board is majority. If four of us vote for something, it passes, it happens, right? And so if four of us think that the superintendent is at a four and three of us think that he's at a one, averaging does not reflect what a majority of the board feels. So that's why we want to make sure that we stay away from averaging. Another thing is if we average, every one of our individual evaluation instruments is subject to FOIA. When we come to consensus, the only one that is subject to FOIA is that final one that we've all come to agreement on and signed off on. That's the only one that can be foible. All of our individual notes and individual evaluations are not foible when we use consensus. Okay, so then once the meeting is completed, then we've got that completed evaluation. The board can then work with the superintendent to coordinate that public statement. We know that a public body may meet in a closed session to consider periodic personnel evaluation. But again, as we said, only if the superintendent requests it. And as soon as the superintendent requests to go back into open session, you immediately go back into open session. So if the superintendent decides, okay, we're done. I've had enough of this. We're going back into session, then back in open session you go. All right, so during the open phase, we schedule, we choose to modify, we establish the goals, we determine the process, we adopt. We vote to go into closed session. We do all those related board actions and discussions. In the closed phase, we discuss and deliberate. So as I do this evaluation with boards, when we go into closed session and most boards go into closed session after requesting superintendent, that's most of them want to do that. In the closed session, we can have all the discussion around the instrument. We can go through each one of those areas and we can have the discussion. And as we're going through those, if I was the board president or if I was facilitating this, I would just kind of keep note as we're going through each of these indicators and kind of jot down what I think we're roughly at. So I think we're probably at a four on this one. We're probably at a three on this one. Just go through that and do the whole thing. When we come back into open session, we're going to go through each of those indicators again. But there's no discussion because we've had all the discussion in closed session. All we're going to do in open session is just finalize the scores. So A1, uh, you know, based on what we talked about, uh, in closed session, I think we're probably at a four here. And I just kind of looked around the room and I kind of see everyone nodded. No one's really objected much. Okay, four. Uh, in this area of A2, I think we came to consensus on a three and a half. Everyone just kind of nodding. Okay, good. A3, I think we were probably at a three on this one. Couple of board members saying, well, I don't know. I, I think he did a really nice job here. Maybe we want to talk about a four. You know, we talked about a couple of things in closed session. Okay, well, does a four sound good? Everyone come, four, okay, four, good. So, and so that's what we do. In the open session, we're going through each of the indicators, we're coming to consensus on a score. But there's really no discussion because we had all the discussion in closed session. Okay? All right, so then once we come back into the open meeting, we go through this consensus scoring like we just talked about. And then at the end of that, we call for a vote to adopt the evaluation. Any questions about the process that we just talked about, closed session, going through the tool, come to consensus? Any questions around any of that? Okay. So establishing and using a calendar. So this is the calendar that's going to work for you because you're in that November, December kind of timeframe for evaluating your superintendent. So this is what Kevin had alluded to earlier. So in January, you set your expectations, you set your schedule. In April, you do an informal update. So that may be just a, you know, a board report from the superintendent. Uh, you know, June, a more formal discussion, maybe that's actually part of a whole board meeting. August, another informal update. And then in November, December, somewhere in that area, you do the actual evaluation. So those check ins are an opportunity to revisit the expectations that you as a board have established. It's an opportunity to discuss the extent to which those expectations are being met. It's an opportunity for the superintendent to inquire, or I'm sorry, for the board to inquire of the superintendent, any barriers to progress that has, you know, that he's run into and is there anything that you as a board can do to help and remove those? And then your feedback to the superintendent can be as simple as, hey, keep doing this, do more of that, do less of this. So during that January workshop, we're going to talk about our expectations. We're going to talk about indicators of success, the evidence that we would like him to collect. We're going to talk about, uh, our mutually agreed upon expectations, those indicators and evidence, and then we're going to schedule all our dates. During this beginning of the cycle, we're going to want the superintendent's job description, current contract, board's policies related to superintendent eval, district wide improvement plan, strategic plan, district student growth. district-wide improvement plan, strategic plan, district student growth model, superintendent performance goals, blank copy of the evaluation instrument, board planning calendar. So that April, like I said, that could be an informal update. The board offers input and status, progress update. That June workshop, this could be more of a formal. This is also a good time to talk about how the year closed out. Uh, an opportunity to get clarification, uh, discussion on progress and growth because we're kind of at that halfway point of the evaluation cycle. And then if we need to make any, uh, you know, mid-course, uh, direction changes, this is a good time to do that.
Hey Jay.
Yeah.
I just want to add that it was added for, um, for our board members. Monthly, I do a check-in. It's a 15 to 30 minute check-in to where any of these things, instead of waiting until we get to these dates, that check-in for that month allows the board members as an individual that I'm having that conversation around these same situations so that they don't have to wait three months in because every month I'm doing a 15 to 30 minute check-in.
Okay, good.
Okay, just wanted to share that so that, because you used the word check-ins and I'm going, yeah, we also added in extra check-ins.
Fantastic.
For a board member.
Fantastic. So August, again, is another opportunity for a check-in. Uh, it could be an informal update similar to that April, uh, greater focus on the status of the district. We're getting ready for the new school year. So any new school year initiatives, what's our enrollment looking like? What's our funding, uh, funding projections looking like? Then we get to November, that's the actual evaluation. So the superintendent conducts a self eval, gives you the evidence, board members review, seek clarification. We conduct the evaluation conference. We have that open constructive discussion centered on growth. So these are the three possible cycles. You know, you're already kind of in that January to December, and that's great. Uh, that works nicely because, uh, as you see the advantage there that aligns with the election cycle. So those of you that were just recently elected in November, you'll be part of the board for almost an entire year before it's time to evaluate the superintendent as opposed to if you had been on that April to March cycle, you may be evaluating the superintendent, I'm sorry, March, April, you may be attend, uh, evaluating the superintendent here in, uh, in March after having only been on the board for a couple of months. And so that's one of the reasons that we see a lot of boards moving towards that January to December. That green one in the middle, that's mostly reserved for ISDs and RESSes, and that's because their board election cycles are on a different cycle than, uh, than your local districts. All right. So those are the things I wanted to cover on the evaluation instrument. Any questions about the evaluation instrument or any of the training that we've done so far?
Hey Jay, uh, so Abby, I think touched on it a little bit, uh, earlier on. I, I guess my question is, do we use a blank form of this sooner than later to go through each one? Explaining to Kevin, you know, give, for him to give us the feedback on where he believes he's at right now, where we think he's at. Do we get that, um, at any point in time or?
I, I think, I think it would be important for, you know, especially because this is your first go around with this. I think it would be important for you to consider, um, going over the evaluation tool and seeing if there's anything in there that jumps out at you is like, man, we've got to really make sure that, you know, Kevin works on this for this year. And if you see something like that, that definitely, you know, have that discussion, uh, you know, as long as, as a board, you come together and say, yeah, this is an area that we really want to make sure Kevin's focusing on, then that's definitely appropriate. So I don't know that we need to, you know, go through every box and rate every box as to where we think Kevin should be on this right now. But I think if we can just kind of look through the tool and, you know, find those areas in which we think we want to make sure that we're working on and, and, you know, keeping it focused. Um, I think that the goals that, that Kevin has set is going to address, uh, you know, based on what I was hearing Monday night. Uh, it seems like the goals that Kevin has chosen to address are, uh, are things that you as a board think are appropriate, things that he can work on and things that you would like to, uh, like to see him work on for the year. And I think that if there's other areas within the tool that, uh, that you have some concerns about, that you should definitely have that conversation with him sooner than later. So he can make those adjustments throughout the year so that when you get to that evaluation at the end of the year, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, he's addressed those to your satisfaction and, and has, has accomplished the things that you're looking for. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, I think she used the, so there's no surprises. He knows where we're at. We know where he, where, where he's at, uh, you know, uh.
Yeah, 100%. The other thing that, um, from my recollection of the, when we very first started using this tool, I don't know how long ago that was, Jay. It was with Ben, I think. It was a long time ago. Anyway, the, um, the tool itself, the board, the seven of us had a really different perceptions of what each box meant. So part of what we may want to do as a board, in addition to getting input from Kevin, if there's an area that any board member wants to focus on more clearly or is concerned about, it might also be worth us spending some time making sure that we are all, um, thinking about it or defining it, or we're all on the same page, all eight of us at that point. I, I just know that was a problem when we very first started using it, that we had different interpretations of some of them.
Okay.
So I think both, I guess.
Let me, uh, let me think of some ideas. We might each individually maybe fill out, uh, our concerns or whatever and, and present them together or something. We'll, we'll figure something out, but I just, I, exactly what you just said and, and count, I'm not just, I'm just trying not to, you surprise us and, and, you know, us surprise you with something, um, you thought that you were uh, going in the right direction or doing it the right way. Like, like Jay mentioned a few times, uh, the superintendent thought one thing and, uh, and the board thought another. So, uh, that was.
And that's exactly right. I mean, it's not, you know, if, if we get to the end of this and, uh, and the board's like, well, no, that's not what we, you know, that's not how we interpret this at all. And the superintendent's like, uh, so, you know, at that point, it's kind of, it's kind of too late. So yes, to definitely get out in front of this so that we, you know, we're starting from the same point and we all know this is how we're interpreting this. This is what we're thinking, then that's definitely, uh, a step in the right direction for sure.
Okay.
Hey Jay, is there a, is there a printed version of the content that we just went over in, in the tool just?
Yeah, so the, the instrument itself can be printed off our website. Uh, so if you go to the website, you can print off the PDF or the, uh, or the Excel version. Absolutely. And I would recommend that, and then you'll have the tool itself. And then as you get into those appendices, uh, of the tool, it has, uh, the calendar that we talked about and it has the process for conducting the evaluation that we talked about. So it covers most of the things we talked about in the presentation tonight as well.
I bet you Jackie would send it to us.
I bet she would.
Well, it's probably already in our email.
Now added to the Google Drive so you can access it there whenever you would like.
There you go.
You are awesome.
Look at that.
So while we're on that, I think is, um, Kevin's last evaluation also out there on the Google Drive?
It is on there. I just, yes.
Cause then you guys can look and see what the scores were last time and see if there's, that might help you also.
And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two files in there too. I think your self evaluation is in there and possibly one of your evidence files might be in there.
That's correct. Yes, yes. And I, I would, uh, I would recommend that there's five areas. And as Jay said, there's the one, the three at the top, which is, uh, relationships or relations. I would recommend that, um, as you're going in and you're looking, that you first choose which one of those five that you would say is of interest for each of the board members. And then from there, go in and find out what two or three or what one is standing out that you have a concern about making sure that, hey, this is the way I read this and this is what I think it says. And I think we want to make sure Kevin's thinking the same way. So then when I come back and say, yeah, I'm doing that and here's my evidence, that's that dialogue and that discussion that Jay's talking about that will get us on the same page.
So I, I totally understand where you're coming from. I am in full support of giving you as much information as we can right now to let you know where we stand as a board. Um, we'll get together, the seven of us, we'll get together and figure out how we want to go through with that. But, um, I'll make sure that that is presented to you, uh, sooner than later. Is that fair enough?
Jeff, can I just ask what, what do you mean by the seven of us will get together?
Figure, figure out how we want to do it. If you want to take a section like, like Kevin said, if you want to take this section and Tim take a section or, you know, you want to take.
So just take part of this meeting and talk about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
All right. So do we want to, uh, take some time to look at the revised goals that Kevin has put together for his, uh, performance goals now? Does that work for you, Mr. President?
We, that is fine. We were provided with that.
All right. Do you, uh, does everyone have it? Do you want to pull it up and share it? How do you want to do it?
Might as well go ahead and pull it up. So the viewer, the viewers can see and know right where we're going along.
We can do that.
Please and thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so let me make this a little bit bigger here. All right.
There we go.
Okay, so this first area was around improving student performance in all curricular areas and, uh, specifically increasing staff competency and providing comprehensive instruction in a virtual environment. So Kevin, why don't you go ahead and walk us through, the blue is, uh, what Kevin has added here. So go ahead and walk us through that.
Yeah, so I, uh, was trying to make sure I was staying with the same thoughts that were coming out on the notes that you put in Jay, and at the same time, the, uh, the performance area, this is talking about for the year, which is the reason that the superintendent performance goal starts out with the superintendent will. It's not saying three to five years like it did before. So in blue, it says, I will create a virtual alternative learning program for K-12 students by completing a series of research-based analysis of virtual programs, which means what we talked about before, just because one sounds like it works, we want to make sure that we're working with one that is going to be, uh, comfortable for Penfield and that that will be done in the next 10 months. Or should I say it's going to be done over the time of the next 10 months so that I can present this findings by November, uh, by the final evaluation. Well, of course, you'd get it before November because we're going to start the school year in August and September. And a number of those information comes in, what was it, April? And then in, was it June? No, it wasn't June, April.
August, April, June, August.
Right. So that April and August is going to be the informal and then a formal on these type of details. However, information each month is going to be coming to the school board based on where I am in this process, plus having that check-in to say if there's more questions about this actual work.
Okay, any board comments on this goal?
This is a really good one for me to ask Jay, how the, a, a process question about uh, how the superintendent shares information with the board. So when I'm reading this, I'm wondering, are, should we be looking at Kevin to, um, have the research of the virtual programs done and present the findings before they're implemented? Or is he just presenting it to us on November and saying, here what I did, here's what I did? How should that be written?
Uh, no, I think the way it's written is fine. I think that Kevin, uh, you know, just expressed to you that he's going to be giving you regular updates along the way. I can't imagine that Kevin would implement something without briefing the board as to, hey, the research is telling me that this is the most effective way to do this and this is what the plan is. How do you feel about that? And then once he gets the board's blessing, then proceeding down the, the road of, uh, of starting to implement and then keeping you involved in the updates as to how implementation is going and everything along those lines. I mean, what I've seen some superintendents do is, so once we have established these goals, takes these goals, includes them in the, you know, monthly updates that he's doing with you and basically just keep, you know, put some additional information right there. So, hey, this goal right here, these are the things that we've done so far. Boom, 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 boom. This is the research that I found and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Or it sits down in the meeting and, okay, so we're talking goal number one. All right. So that virtual alternative program, well, this is the research that I've been reading. This is where I think we're headed with this. This is what we've done so far. Allow you opportunity for feedback and for, you know, asking any questions, getting any clarity on anything along those lines. And so as long as you, now, now as you as a board know what the goal is, you as a board should expect regular updates as to the progress towards these goals. If you're not getting satisfactory reports, then you need to voice that to the superintendent. Say, hey, Kevin, where's this virtual program? You said we were going to get monthly updates on it. We haven't heard anything in forever. What's going on here, right? And so, uh, you know, now that you know what the goals are, you know, you should be getting regular updates to that. And if you're not, then you need to hold them accountable for that.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead, Abby.
I'm sorry, I, but I think if the board decides, we want to make sure that this virtual learning program is implemented in time for the new school year, which I know Kevin also does, should we have a different timeline on it?
My question exactly, Jay. I, I was going to go straight to Kevin and ask him, I, am I the only one that thinks 10 months is extremely too long on this or?
So what Jay just shared earlier is the same thing that I'm talking about. I've got to bring this before 10 months for board approval because I can't implement this program without board approval anyway before we get into the next school year. So there'll be board approval, but the process in which it is actually, uh, after it's approved, and then once it's actually activated and it's actually being implemented, then I still have to bring you reports as to how it is working or not working, which is why it says the findings.
But can we put a, but can we add to this goal that it will be implemented by next school year?
We can put that in there, but let's see.
So that's what I'm wondering.
Well, if we.
Uh, create and implement a virtual alternative learning program by the 21, 22 school, beginning of the 21, 22 school year or something like that.
And then. What, what do you think if we put benchmarks in there and said, uh, following kind of what Kevin's saying is, um, why don't I bring to you a beta or a proposal within two months and lay out a, a timeline within that 10-month period? Would that work?
I, yeah, I don't know what all is involved in getting it ready. So I guess that would be up to, um, Kevin to tell us what was, be reasonable to have at each of those markers, but I think that we're all agreeing that it's something that you plan to have implemented by next school year. So why not put some, something to that effect in here?
So, so we could be, um, benchmarks, as Tim was saying, to where I could actually put bullet points under it, shows like each month exactly what's going to be coming to the, uh, board, like the committee as a whole saying, here's the research I've gotten, here's the idea, now it's K-8. This is the conversations and meetings I've had with the area superintendents. This is what's being proposed. Hey, what do you think about that? So I could put benchmarks to where it shows all the way up to the goals, if the board's approval for implementation. But I don't know if writing it directly into the gold is, um, is the way to go unless I write it into the goal and I'm taking out the 10 months and so it would read more of, uh, K-12 students by completing a series of research-based analysis of virtual programs and presenting or comma presenting, uh, for approval by June 2021. And then presenting the find, the finding, I'd, I'd have to go back and see how I can put that inside the goal without it sounding really wordy.
Because then you would have to have board approval in order to start it in the fall. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I think if those benchmarks just don't exceed the, the drop dead timeline, we'll know if we're off track as we're going.
That's what I thought you were mentioning earlier, Tim. Jay, what, what are you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think that's an excellent idea. I think that you, I think the goal is fine as written. Uh, I think we need to attach some benchmarks to it to just kind of lay it out as, you know, these are the, you know, as we get to these checkpoints, these are things that, you know, we're expecting. So, uh, you know, we expect the research to be done by this time. We expect the, uh, decision on, you know, moving forward to be done by this time with the expectation that this is ready to go by the beginning of the 2021 school year. I'm sorry, 21, 22, right? What year is it? Day, week, month?
Next year would be 21, 22, yes.
Very good.
So Abby, what do, what do you think about the, uh, addition of benchmarks that come? So Abby, what do, what do you think about the addition of benchmarks that come under the goal?
I think that you guys, that sounds great to me. I think that, thank you, Tim and Kevin and Jay for.
Absolutely.
And I, I would bet that we're going to find the same in the next three goals that benchmarks are also because each one talks about 10 months later. With the findings, so as we get into the next one.
Yeah, Craig.
Um, if we're, if we're going to the next one, I, I think I had spoken the other day, I, I was meaning that goal to be increased teacher science PD rather than increased science teacher PD. Because the, the area I think where our, um, my concern is that in the elementary school levels, we don't have a lot of specialists in science. And that as a result, those teachers needed more, uh, PD insights.
Got it.
So. I, I gotta tell you, Craig, I'm still trying to work on how to utilize and how to, uh, bring life to that science without bringing life to all of the core classes in those areas. So I, that's one reason I don't have a, uh, a blue goal written around science yet.
Sure. I, I, I think, um, this may be an area, and I don't want to throw Sarah under the bus. Uh, but sometimes you have to, um, where Sarah may have an insight, uh, into, um, uh, what would be a process that maybe she has seen in, uh, in science ed. Uh, that, that maybe she's as known to be successful. Um, but in the meantime, I'm just happy to, you know, know that you are working on it. Uh, because I think that's just, we, we gotta start somewhere.
And I would bet that we can, I can, uh, put that in with the benchmarks. Because that research is also going to speak to the math, the science, as much as it's going to speak to the English and social studies. That, so in those benchmarks and that research is going to pull that out as to what, uh, virtual programs we're using. And then that will also help with, um, trying to tease out the science piece and what type of supports we're going to be utilizing with the teachers there. So get, I, I'll have to take some more time on it, but I'm sure that those core areas are going to come out. I'll include them in the benchmarks.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So. Sorry, Jay. So Kevin, so as we're moving forward, I'm going to assume that this is going to be revamped. Uh, you're going to add on to this and we're going to approve of this later?
Yeah, I'm going to add on, uh, benchmarks, but since tonight is more about the actual goal, I need to make sure that we are in agreement with the goal looks like. And then we can always come back to where I can add the benchmarks and just send them right out to you and you kind of, as we're having those, uh, check-ins. And even with the, uh, committee as a whole, when I'm doing some overview and bringing to the table, we can say, yep, about those benchmarks, did we, uh, kind of explain to me about this third benchmark? And the timeline that you're going to hit this before we get to, uh, April or before we get to August?
I, I understand where you're going and I kind of disagree with that. It's kind of hard to agree with something and vote for something if we don't know all the wording that's in the contract. Uh, you can't sign a contract if you don't know all the wording.
So, so what, if I understand correctly, knowing what my goals are is not as much as getting all the details as to how the goal is going to be implemented. You want to know more about the benchmarks, about how it's going to be implemented.
That seems to be the consensus of the board, yes.
Okay, okay.
I'd agree with that. I think timing is just as important as the goal.
Right, I, the virtual, I, I assumed we'd be way further along than this and I'm sorry, but 10 months to, to implement, now we're talking June. So I think we need to, we need to get our wording in there to where this, this virtual is being addressed.
So I think that what I heard is that, well, that it will be implemented in August that in June, this June is when it will be voted on. But I do, so I think Jeff, your, your timeline question is kind of the same as mine is, it does feel like this doesn't clearly say it's going to be implemented in the next school year. It just says you're going to create it. So that at least one benchmark that says the board, the board will be presby, presented on to the board in June. Or something.
Yeah, exactly. I, I'm sorry, but if we leave this the way it stands, it's given 10 months uh, to find a virtual program and you'll notify us in, in November. I'm sorry, but I, we can't.
Okay, so, so I'll create those benchmarks. And when we meet as a board again, then you'll be able to, uh, uh, first view them because it'd be a committee as a whole. And then at the board, it can actually be, uh, approved for those actual. So it's going to be goals and benchmarks that can be approved.
If that's easier, if that's easier than doing benchmarks tonight, then.
Yeah, yeah, because there's, there's no way I'm going to be able to create the benchmarks tonight based based on what needs to go into, like I said, the next three goals. I'm sure benchmarks are going to be needed on those also.
Okay, so we'll get done, we'll pull it as a vote on whether to table it or, or not. We'll, we'll go from there.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on this first one? Are we ready to move on to district goal statement two?
Sir.
Okay, uh, so this one was around, uh, improving and promote effective two-way communication. And, uh, this one was going to be creating engagement opportunities for stakeholders in the community. Now why don't you go ahead, Kevin?
Yeah, and so this goal is written to create events and opportunities to in, of the engagement with senior citizens and business owners in the next 10 months and present the findings by November in the final evaluation. I think I left out November 2021. Nope, I didn't put 2021 on either of those because I know it was the same year. But I should have put 2021 in there also.
So when you create the benchmarks for this area, I think again, it's going to be, uh, you know, some benchmarks around the types of events that you're thinking about. Uh, and it's kind of a rough timeline on when you think you'll start implementing some of these events and then, uh, you'll make sure that you're reporting along the way, regular updates, and then we'll have the final kind of presentation ready for the uh, evaluation in November.
Yes, so then that becomes the question is, this only speaks to senior citizens and business owners. Was there something other group that was, I mean, this is what we talked about the last meeting on Monday. Um, that's the only difference with this when it comes to those events. Now, don't get me wrong, everybody's going to be invited to most of these events, but it's more of the engagement with the senior citizens and our business owners.
This is one that I don't even, I guess I'm, uh, maybe confused a little bit about the term benchmark for this one. Could, because it feels like you could just increase the, um, add a couple of words and say, I will create four to six events and opportunities evenly spaced over the next 10 months and that will give you one, uh, we could leave this statement the way it is. It doesn't really need additional benchmarks to me. I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I would be fine with that, with you explaining that, that's a great goal, but I want to see what your goal is within the goal. And it, does that make sense? I want you to give me exactly what Abby said, uh, four, six. That way, again, like this whole night has been, there's, there's no lack of communication. You're straight, we're straight. We know what to expect. You know what to provide.
If, if that's the case, then it would be benchmarks that would make it even easier than changing the goal itself.
Okay.
Just something quantifiable. Like, like Abby was saying, just something quantifiable.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on the second goal? All right, so third goal was around, uh, improvement of facilities and efficiency of operations. And this one is going to be a process for implementing improvements for, uh, from the facility assessment plan.
And this, uh, goal is written to design a backup facilities plan with the district's administrative team in the next 10 months and present the findings, uh, and then findings of the November final evaluation. Uh, a backup facilities plan, that's if the bond is not going to be a goal. And there has to be another plan because we can't just continue to, uh, there's no way I'll be saying, well, it's okay, you know, we'll just keep waiting. There are certain things that still have to be taken care of. And then again, if this is some benchmark that can be put in place, then you would know the parking lot at the, uh, elementary schools that were taken care of, certain parking lots that Dunlop and the middle school that was taken care of in the high school, that you actually start seeing those actual projects that need to be taken care of as we're trying to move forward based on the fact that, uh, it's also considered a backup plan. Thoughts?
So this is a hard one for me because we're, we're planning a goal not knowing, not knowing what's going to happen. So if the bond does pass, then this goal is out the window.
No, 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 because if the bond passes, what I'm going to put in there are going to be those small things that have to be taken care of. And if a bond is passed, it's still going to be, this backup plan still has money that is still going to be put in place for these pieces. That's why I mentioned parking lot as an example. So in the bond, say there's conversation and pieces about the parking lot. Well, if I got a backup plan that we're already utilizing district funds for a parking lot, then in the bond, you can take the parking lot out. Because we've already put it over here. Um, let's say it's the, uh, the upgrade of a boiler. And that over here, if there was buying a new boiler, then we won't be having to put that in this big bond anymore. Upgrade.
Answers my question.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on number three? All right, last one here was around creating a safe and positive learning environment with high expectations shared by all. The particular area here Kevin was going to focus on was ensuring students and staff feel safe and comfortable in risk-taking in their learning environment.
Yeah, so I actually came into the district and my 90-day plan talked about doing teacher talks. And somewhere along the way, we had some teachers thought that it was a goal that was written by the board. That was a part of my 90-day plan when I was, uh, uh, talking about coming on to my second interview. So, since that was a piece that they felt really excited about, my thought is to re-implement those teacher talks. And then when I say their teacher talks, it's really the staff, because I went to the transportation department, the secretarial staff. The, uh, I go to each building, have these conversations with teachers and allow them to tell me what their thoughts are based on the instruction and the learning environment. And the actual PD that they actually go through as to how they think we can move forward. So, um, I put in a creating a schedule, because when they knew a couple of weeks ahead of time and, you know, before I would take, um, I, Jackie and I would haul over water and donuts or, or oranges or apples. Um, I'm going to put in a schedule with district teachers and staff to gather quantitative data with a research-based method, which means that I am pulling what conversational pieces that they're sharing. And I'm going to be able to put that in an actual, uh, uh, text-based, what they're actually sharing. And be able to start utilizing hearing this in this one building, one elementary building. And I'm hearing the same thing at the middle school and then being able to bring that data and say, here's what we've been doing to try to move forward to create an environment that they can say, hey, I can take these risks because we are moving further along than where we are right now with the instruction being the responsibility and the commitment at the teacher level. But I should say at the building level because we actually start with the building principals and then the building principals supporting the teachers. So this is more of a.
Sounds really great. Sounds like the teachers are on board with that. So it's my understanding that you haven't done any of these?
Yeah, I did these all the way up until the pandemic hit.
Okay. So we had a lot of support on that and it was.
What's the group size on that? Are you talking to like a building of teachers at a time or smaller groups than that?
Yeah, and it was of each building. And I get, I share with you that it started out with the first and there was maybe at each building except for the high school and the middle school. It was almost like all of them showed up because they thought that I was coming in to tell them, hey, here's what's new and here's what's going on. When really I was showing up to say, no, 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 I want to hear from you. I want you to give me some input. So then the second time around, the group got smaller. And it was more of them that was saying, hey, just, just share that, you know, what about this? If we can do this. Or we're kind of concerned about this. So they started sending friends of friends. Because what I told them is we did not want to make it a situation to where if you've got family and you need to go pick up kids after school, then don't let my saying, the superintendent's showing up, hold you up from doing that. But we tried to schedule two and three weeks out so that they could even plan for that if they wanted to. And a, and a number of the teachers, they would just stop me in the halls when I'm walking through the hallways and say, hey, I'm sorry, I missed that opportunity. But if you got a minute, can you, I'd be like, sure. What, what's on your mind? Talk to me.
Maybe a recording? Would that be a good idea, Kevin?
You know what? I wanted the teachers to feel comfortable about talking without them thinking I was trying to dictate everything that they were talking about. It was really, it was really a, a friendly gathering. To shoot the bull about a little bit of everything that's going on with the kids in the building. Even the administrator, we told them, you don't have to show up to these because I don't want teachers to think that they have to hold what they want to say because an administrator is there. Now, don't get me wrong with Jane and Hottie, they were still talking. They, they were like, okay, whatever, you know, she's here. But you can't say that comfort was with, even with the new principals that were there. So it was, um, it's very helpful at the time.
The reason I asked about this size, I just wondered if in a group as big as the building, if you think everybody felt heard and comfortable to speak up. Whereas if you went to a smaller group like a PLC, if everybody might have more of a voice. I was just curious.
Uh, that's a very good point, Sarah. And I tell you, I will, uh, make a point of, um, going to, going to the actual, going to, uh, some of those PLCs. I didn't want to take away from those conversations where teacher, teacher talk. Instead of, okay, now all of a sudden the superintendent's coming, I got something else I want to talk to them about. But, uh, it, we worked out better whenever teachers were just stopping me in the hall and telling me, hey, you know, you got a minute, uh, let me talk to you. I didn't get a chance to make it to teach talk. Sure, let's talk. But very good point, smaller groups. I can tell you when some of the larger groups, what we got was a lot of the teachers chiming in going, yeah, 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 that's right. I was like, oh, okay.
So what do you think in a timeline on this, Kevin? Once a month?
Uh, Jackie, didn't we do every other month?
I won't say. Every other month because we were, we had talked and the teachers did not want every month. So it was every other month.
Yep, it was every other month.
Um, I would like, I would like everybody else's opinion, but would it be fair enough to put a timeline in there of every two months? One will be held every two months?
You want me to try to write it into the goal or put it in as benchmarks?
Staff gathering and data with a research.
I just be concerned, Jeff, that then it would see, seem forced. Like he seems to act like he wants teachers to be comfortable like talking to them when they see him when it's not a scheduled visit. So if it's like, you know, you give an exact time and it seems forced, then it's not the natural conversation that he's seeking out, I think.
I hear you.
And I, I appreciate that, sir, because I did make the comment to each one of those. I didn't want them to feel like it was a staff meeting. You know, when you come to a staff meeting, you got this thought in your mind like, oh, man, I gotta take this time. And it's like, no, that's why there's snacks. That's why we're trying to, you know, make it a relaxing type of opportunity. When it was, uh, oh, what was it? Apple cider and, and donuts at one time. And I was like, okay, it's so it, it is more of a, uh, an open dialogue is what we were trying to create with the teachers.
What, what do you think about something like, I think, teacher talks in each building between, or, you know, some, something qualitative but not time constrained or would that? Or, you know, some, something qualitative but not time constrained or would that, would that help, Jeff?
I like where you're going. Craig, you have your hand up. What do you, what's your input, sir?
I was just gonna say that um, three times in the next six months or five months is, is I think a good number. Uh, and that will uh, help us, uh, help Kevin ramp up for the fall. Because he'll be hearing that feedback hopefully from some small groups from each building. So that's, I think, a really good thing. Measuring that is gonna be a really high difficult thing. Uh, but I would say, Jeff, maybe a um, a survey monkey. That might be helpful at the end to get the information from the, the teachers have shared. Over those three different meetings. Maybe, maybe there's something where, where Kevin sets it up. So, okay, he's going to those different schools. In January and, and there's a survey monkey that says, please fill this out as a follow-up to the, to the meeting. Maybe they didn't make it to the meeting. Uh, and so therefore, it would be just Kevin being there personally, which is a good thing. But at least they would be getting some feedback on top of that. In case they couldn't make it.
I actually like that idea, Craig, because if they didn't get a chance to attend, could be one question. If they didn't get to attend, but they talked to someone else who did attend and then get, get them some data from there also. But if you were able to attend, what would you have wanted to talk to the superintendent about? Oh, yeah, that, that's not a bad idea because then I can quantify it. And it's not, it's one thing I have the question answers. It's another one when I can add it and make it a uh, a mixed method. So that's, that.
And the one thing with that, Kevin, too, is that would also perhaps prep you for. Uh, the type of messaging you want to do out to the district as well.
Yes.
So in case there's something else that you wanna show the district that's coming up in those meetings, then that would, that would help you.
Yes, absolutely. So, so what about that? It's being benchmarks that come under. That also shows the schedule and timeline of uh, a process when we're setting those up. And then again, as we're coming to board meetings, even though we're putting it in superintendent comments or. Uh, dropping the information into the uh, school board, Google Doc. You'll still be able to see that these things are occurring. Because you'll look for it right after you said, well, this was a week that you were gonna go out to uh, Purdy. So I go in there and I look at, what do you know? There's some information from what Purdy was saying.
I like that. Anybody else?
Jay, have you seen anything else like this before?
Anything like.
Like what, like we're talking with uh, Kevin about, with going out to the buildings and then giving feedback from teachers to.
Oh, oh, sure. Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, it, it varies from, you know, district to district, uh, you know, different superintendents have different ways of soliciting feedback from teachers. Uh, informal, formal, surveys, phone calls, meetings, coffee. I mean, it's all over the map.
Yep. Alright.
Okay, any other comments on number four? Okay, so to recap, Kevin is going to go through these and make sure that there's appropriate benchmarks in place. So the board has a uh, defined idea of. How Kevin is going to and how regularly Kevin is going to give you feedback, give you progress reports, the types of progress that he's going to be. Um, giving to you, the evidence that he's going to be displaying. So especially for that first level, uh, that first goal that we talked about. Making sure that he's presenting to you the research that he's done and the outcome of that and getting board feedback on that before he progresses forward with. Uh, the actual, you know, creation of the program and moving of the program and things of that nature. So once he gets those benchmarks in there and some clarifying remarks and some of those other goals, then you should be good to go. Uh, in approving those goals for the purposes of evaluation. We've talked about the evaluation process tonight, so you're all trained up on that and ready to go there. Uh, please remember that uh, as you get to that portion uh, of your year uh, this fall. Uh, that uh, if you determine that you would like someone to come into facilitate that uh, process for you, let me know. And I will see what I can do about getting someone to come in and do that with you. That'd be something we would offer again to you this fall, um, as always. Um, now you had something along the lines of board goals. Is that still something that you wanted to discuss tonight?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
I think we can at least get a rough start of it. Um, I apologize to everybody. I. We're, we're running uh, you know, we're running into nine o'clock, so um, I. I would say a suggestion would be to run through it, at least get a basis of what we wanna establish. And not take up too much of Jay's time. Does anybody have any objection to that? At least get us, uh, our first step of moving forward. Okay. Is that fair, Jay?
That's fair. Let's do it.
So you, you have some already thought of or do you want, are you asking for each of us to give you some input? Or what's your, what you wanna do, Jeff?
So I honestly didn't ask Jay about this on if he had any type of presentation for this. Um, I just so happened to Google and I have about five different board. Uh, education policies, goals and mission statement. So I, Jay, if you could help. Me here, obviously none of us have ever done this. I don't know if we want to. Uh, kind of give us some guide.
Let me uh.
Own.
Let me show you, let me show you a little something here. Just give me half a second here. Pull it up.
I apologize, Jay.
Oh, no, you're good. Now, what kind of. What kind of presenter would I be if I didn't have something for just such an occasion? Okay, so uh, M A S B does have uh, what we refer to as our uh, governance standards. Okay, and these governance standards cover the types of things that we think effective boards should consider. As they, you know, govern. And so it starts with. Uh, some guiding principles around accountability, commitment to learning, inclusivity, stewardship, transparency. Vision-driven, and then each of these has. A statement and then some questions that the boards can consider as they think about how this is going to. Work for them and how's this going to apply. So for instance, this first one talks about. The Board of Education, cooperation with the superintendent stakeholders, establish and commit to a vision for the school district that emphasizes high expectations. For achievement of all students and quality instruction. Well, I mean, you, you've done that through your strategic plan. So what types of things? Can we think about as this relates? Well, has the Board of Education formally adopted a district plan that includes a concise vision statement? You have. Were stakeholders engaged? You did. And so, you know, you can work through all of these uh, to kind of get an idea as to where you are. The second one talks about the Board of Education governing in a manner that is dignified and worthy of trust. I think that is something else that as a board you would aspire to do. Uh, the third one talks about the Board of Education is accountable to the school district community. The fourth one talks about holding the superintendent accountable for creating outcomes identified in the school district plan, which, I mean, we talked about tonight, right? Those goals that we talked about tonight are those goals that you have decided will help hold the superintendent accountable for creating outcomes. That are identified in your school district plan or your school strategic plan. And then this fifth one. Uh, I'm sorry, those were the, and then we get into the individual board members. So those are kind of the overall board. Now, as individual board members, the individual board member is motivated by and focuses on what is in the best interest of all students. The individual board member, it believes in the importance and actively engages in lifelong learning. The individual board member understands, respects both the authority and responsibilities of the entire Board of Education. And the individual school board member approaches school governance work with a spirit of inquiry. So what we've found is, is that we've got boards across the state that have adopted these governance standards. As kind of a framework for how they as a board are going to do their business. So by adopting these standards, you're saying that these are the values that we've established. And these are the things that we're gonna make sure that we do on a regular basis, not only as a board, but also as individual board members. So I think that this is a good jumping off point for a lot of the types of goals that I think you were kind of had in mind. Um, and so I think the governance standards are a good place to start. Um, it may not be the end-all be-all for what you're looking for, but I think it's at least a good place, um, you know, for you to start your discussion.
I think that's excellent. And honestly, I searched and searched on M A S B. I. I apologize. I don't know why I didn't shoot you a text message. I know better now. Um, I apologize for that. Uh, board, I apologize for that. Um, so. Uh, again, we're, we're pushing a little bit for time. So if you guys aren't objective to. Um, I would like to download some of these and show each one of you. Um, kind of where I was leaning and then we can come up with our own uh, statements. And how we're gonna perform. Uh, each, in each area, or uh, how we're gonna perform each duty.
Alright, so I threw the uh, I threw the PDF link up there in the chat box. So you can grab that out of the chat box, Jeff, and then you'll have it.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Abby.
I think that each of us should read through this and maybe pick a few out. And a few of the standards out that are areas that we feel like maybe the board can work on as a group or should focus on. That might help um, get like a, an idea where we're all at.
Sure. And I was gonna ask you, Jay, I don't know how many you've um, quote unquote, board goals you've helped with. Or use this particular governance standard. Uh, is this a norm of basically using this word for word? Do we take what we want, add what we want? Is that a norm?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind, it's kind of a cross. So we, I've had boards that have just adopted the governance standards. Uh, you know, as written, and it basically just said, you know, we pledge, you know, that as board, as a full board, we're going to adhere to this. And as individual board members, we're gonna adhere to this. And as you look through it, you'll see there's, you know, stuff in there about, you know, acting professionally and appropriately like we talked about. And making sure that we're keeping, holding ourselves accountable as well as holding the superintendent accountable. Um, you know, what, what we run into sometimes with uh, with boards that are not behaving the best. Uh, those are boards that have two sets of expectations. And uh, it's, it's kind of like parenting, right? You have uh, expectations for your children as a parent, and then you have expectations for yourself as a parent. And hopefully they're similar. Um, if you, you know, if you're, if you expect that of your child, you most likely should expect that of yourself. Uh, but unfortunately, sometimes we have boards that expect, uh, you know, certain behaviors from a superintendent, but then don't. Believe that the board should be held to those same standards. And so it's kind of like, well, isn't that kind of counterintuitive? If you believe the superintendent should be acting professionally, then you as a board should be acting professionally. If you expect your superintendent to do everything towards. Moving the district forward academically and treating people with respect, then as board members, we probably should treat each other with respect to make sure that we're moving the district forward academically. Um, so uh, that's where we run into, you know, having to work with boards to kind of get them to understand that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Uh, if you will. So, and then we have some boards that take this and take it a step further. And I think, well, the governance standards are great, but you know what? We wanna do even more. And they take it even a little bit further. So they just kind of. Matt, it's different between different boards.
So Jay, would you recommend um, kind of taking this in two phases? The first phase, going through the governance standards, seeing what's applicable, adopting that. And then moving forward the same way that we're asking Kevin to, like Abby was saying, phase two then would be. Identify our own weaknesses, set those goals, put a plan in motion to affect those changes.
So I think that the board governance standards are a fantastic place to start. Uh, I think that you have um, some upcoming training on uh, on DISC and, and things related to that. And I think you've also been talking about doing a board self-assessment, um, after you've been, you know, on the board for a little bit. And I think the board self-assessment is gonna be another very important tool for you to get a, a better idea of where you as a board think you are. And I think that once you have that board self-assessment, that's gonna give you some clear direction on the types of things that you as a board uh, need to work on. I think it's probably a little bit early to do that board self-assessment, only because you haven't been on the board too terribly long. So I think that that might be something you wanna, you know, kind of wait on a little bit. But I think that in the meantime, I think that the governance standards are a good place to start.
And that's what we talked about, Tim, uh, Jay and, and I talked about and was uh, put in my original email to you guys. Asking for your guys' support to have this, uh, not only, number one, the training. For superintendent evaluation, which we needed sooner than later. Um, and, and this to, to implement the board goals. Uh, we can kind of take this wherever we wanna go with it. It's just a, a way to clearly define where we wanna go as one. We're, we're one of seven. We're one board. And if we can clearly define where, where we're going as a team, as a board, I think. Things would be easier uh, for all eight of us, for that matter. Uh, that's why I invited Kevin tonight. I'm glad that you joined us. Thanks again, Kevin. Um.
Yes.
Well, I mean, this is, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, this doesn't even have to be voted in or, or uh.
No.
Filed or anything. This is for our benefit.
Yes.
For essentially the eight of us, um, our benefit moving forward. So we're, we're clear on where we're headed.
Right. We have encouraged boards in the past to consider uh, formally adopting the governance standards as kind of a statement to the public and the community and to your staff. That, you know, we as a board believe in X, Y, Z. And, you know, we have these governance standards. And so we as a board believe that these are the governance standards. And we found the boards that adopt them, cuz of course, once you adopt them, then you need to hold yourselves accountable to them. And so as a measure of accountability, we have found that it is effective as a board. Uh, and if you don't wanna adopt them, you know, as written, if you wanna make some adjustments and whatnot, that's fine. But we have found that boards that have formally adopted them, they're sending that signal, they now have something to adhere to. When you bring on new board members, you can say to new board members, hey, you know, these are the standards that we as adopted of a board, as a board, and we expect you to follow these as well.
So I think some communication amongst us outside uh, is, is where we need to go with this. I'll. I have the link already opened. I can download that and share it all uh, to you guys in an email. If you guys wanna go through in your spare time here in the next week. Uh, X out anything that you don't like, add in what you do like and. Um, and then compile all seven of them together. I can kind of add them all together and then present them to you guys again. And, and see if that's, if everybody's in agreeance. Is that? Is that something that sounds good, guys?
Can you, can you give us the, yes. Do you have some goal, board goals that you were thinking of, Jeff? That you had kind of on your list? Or was this just kind of a general start of a discussion?
The, well, I. I think it's silly to say, I think we all have goals. We all have stuff that we'd like to achieve. Um, I've been pretty adamant. Uh, I think everyone knows my standpoint behind communication. Communication to the public, communication to parents, uh, stuff like that. So. Um, if we can make it clear as a, as a board goal where we're gonna stand on that. And now we're doing Kevin's goals at the same time. You know, we can essentially use our goals to make sure we're all eight on the same plan. We're all, we're all going in the, in the same direction.
It might help Jay to kind of know kind of some of the topics. So I'm, I was along with you of. Um, some of the hot, hot topics that get boards into trouble sometimes are things like. Group agreements on how we're gonna communicate and group agreements on how we're gonna come to consensus on. Um, different, uh, that communicate with each other or communicate with the public. How we're gonna interact with school employees, um, what the board consensus is on those hot topics. So I wondered if that's kind of, that's some of the stuff you were thinking about. And if Jay thinks that. Um, at what line, if he, if you don't, if you think we should wait until after we do the board self-assessment to do some more formal goals. Since we're all coming together as a new group, are there a few of those hot topic items that might be. Along the lines that Jeff is thinking of communication that we, we should talk about before then? Is that kind of where you're going, Jeff, Jeff?
Yes. And again, Jay and I talked, especially with four-member turnover in the past two months. It's, it's gonna be really hard to do a s- a self-assessment. Due to the fact of, of just that.
I agree.
And we can't do a self-assessment on uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. When, you know, majority is, is turned over. So I, I think, I think with, with Jay's. you know, majority i- is turned over. So I, I think, I think with, with Jay's consideration and what I'm hearing from everybody, I would like to at least set some goals and standards, maybe look through this governing standard. At least set us goals and we can always add to it. Um, and then maybe look even like June or July, give us six months under our belt. Maybe do a self of uh, you know, self-assessment then, see where we're at and just so we're always moving forward instead of instead of not moving forward.
Jeff, if I can, if I, I think that's a, a great idea for us to kind of search through those. But I think, and this is where Jay probably can help us out, is that in some cases, I think the Open Meetings Act and everything else that goes on with communications, especially if we're talking about communications with the public, where Kevin is our primary communicator. Uh, it's one of those things where it may be valuable if Jay has got uh an opportunity or somebody at M A S B has an opportunity to uh provide before a board meeting or before a committee, the hall meeting, a in-service that we can do virtually, that we all be on the same, on the same page. And then we have a better idea. It's the, it's the educate before you make the choice kind of approach. Uh, that, that would be what I recommend, but it's up to the, to the, to the majority of the board and to the board's uh sentiments to decide.
So if you're talking along the lines of uh communication specifically, then yes, we have uh, you know, we have some uh members of uh of our staff that have a variety of different presentations that they'd be more than happy to present to you on communication uh to the public, communication, you know, board superintendent communication, um, you know, social media, whatever, you know, just give me a, a better idea of exactly what you're talking about as far as communication. We can definitely figure out something there. Um, I also wanted to point out that on that webpage that I, that I shared, I think I shared the actual PDF of the governance standards. Um, but if you go to the webpage uh here, I'll do that as well. Uh, you'll see that there is some uh sample um suggestions of adoption, some sample press releases, some frequently asked questions, uh sample board resolution, some additional information. There's an actual toolkit here for the governance standards as well. So there's some additional information on here related to the governance standards other than just the standards. And so I think that's also some information that you could look through and might be able to uh glean some information um from. Uh, but you know, we're here for, for you and you know, anything that you need, we'd be more than happy to try to figure out a workshop that's more appropriate for the types of things that you're talking about. Um, but I think in the meantime, I think that you're, you're on the right track with taking with the governance standards, putting some of those in place for you as a board to work on, thinking about that board self-assessment uh, you know, down the road. Uh, you've got that DISC assessment coming up and that will give you an opportunity again to get to know each other better and 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 address those communication difficulties as well, uh, because that DISC will uh give everyone a clear idea of your preferred method of communication, your preferred mode of communication. Uh, and so I think that DISC assessment is going to be a big help in uh helping address some of those issues as well.
Fair enough. Anybody else with, with anything else on, everybody okay with moving forward with the board goals on our own? Now that we got some, we got some professional insight from Jay. Alright, um, so back to action items, um.
Well, if I could, if that's, if that's it for me, then I'm going to bid you farewell. And uh, good luck with the rest of your meeting and everything and anything you need, just let me know.
I appreciate it, Jay. Anybody else, anything for Jay? Alright, thank you, Jay.
Good to see you all. Yep, okay, bye bye.
Alright, awesome. Appreciate, once again, I appreciate your guys' extra evening tonight. Uh, we got a lot done. Um, so back to action items. Uh, back to three point oh one, board goals. We need to Abby, help me out here. Do, should we just remove it or table it? You're muted. You're muted, Abby.
I had someone in the meeting today said that their um, their your, their goal for the year, their new year's resolution was to not talk while they were muted. Sorry.
It's okay. Would you suggest to?
So those are items for presentation and discussion. Are they, are there, is there anything on there that we have to actually vote on? I don't think so, especially since this is a workshop.
Yeah, you do not, you do not need to make a motion. It's just a presentation discussion, which Jay did, so.
So, so I think that um, the superintendent goals will get so that Jeff and we were talking earlier about consent agendas. We could um ask, we could choose to have those superintendent goals on the consent agenda next meeting since we've already discussed them and agreed on them. Um, so that's when you would vote on those.
Correct.
Does that make sense to everybody? Um, so then I think that what you're asking, Jeff, is for each board member to, you're giving us some homework and you want us to get something back to you that it sounds like then you're going to bring back to the next open meeting for a discussion.
If you guys.
Or you can have us all bring it to them, just be prepared for that, whichever way you want to do it.
I will, I will talk to you after meeting. How's that? We'll get a game plan. I, I think just thinking right now, I think it would be best to compile them all together. This is what we came up with. Are we, are we happy with it? But you and I can talk after the
Yeah, I think the big thing is to not have that interaction. So because that was, you know, so what you want to do is have everybody send you the information if you, if that's what you decide you want them to do, but not have any back and forth with them, because that back and forth discussion needs to happen at the meeting, at the next meeting. Not one on one. Um, but, but we can talk about that later and you can give us, tell us what our homework is and we'll do it.
Stop it. Okay, so we will, we will use those as presentations. Uh, again, I appreciate Jay from coming. So if nobody's got anything further, then we will move on. Uh, four point oh one is comments from the public. Still nobody. Uh, five point oh one, superintendent comments. Mr. Simmons.
I uh have no comments tonight, but I appreciate the uh invite, the invite.
What? Nothing for us?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, six point, six point oh one, board, board comments. Anybody with anything? Alright, again, I want to thank you guys. This was a, the, the superintendent training was something that was much needed to get us rolling on the, on the right path, educate us, make us better board members, know what we're getting into. That was a lot of information tonight and enlightened me. I hope, uh, I hope everybody else um that haven't done the, the superintendent evaluation definitely enlightened me on what to, what to look for, what to address, to be open with Kevin. Um, to, to say, say what we're thinking and let's, let's all work together. Hence, the, the board goals that I would um, I will help with, compile all that stuff and we'll get that. So all seven of us know where we're going. We can give a copy with, to Kevin and then all eight of us know where we sit. Fair enough. Anybody else? Alright, I want to thank you guys again. Seven oh one, adjourn. Go ahead, Tim.
I'd make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion made by Tim, uh seconded by Dana. Sarah, if you would, please.
Alright, Craig. He's gone. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Abby?
Yeah, just for the record, we never used to do this. I don't know what changed, but it was a couple presidents ago, but we used to just the president could just adjourn. So maybe that's something Jeff and Kevin can look into.
Fair enough. Every, everybody have a good night.
Alright, good night.